Welcome to the March 25th. The last four minutes. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So please note that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on our local cable access television. We are hybrid, so people can watch this at home on Zoom. If you are watching at home, if you have questions, please post them into the Q and A feature of the Zoom, and Sean will let us know if questions pop up. I'm going to ask the board to introduce themselves to ensure we have a forum, starting with you, Jamie.
Jamie Stebbins.
I'm Jennifer Stacy.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Full Genetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have our town administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan, and our Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. So we've got a full house tonight, a lot of people here, so we'll get started right away. So the first item we have is a public hearing, and Craig, if you want to read that notice.
Sure. Notice of public hearing in regards to the intent to take property by eminent domain. The town of Easton Select Board intends to take by eminent domain a fee interest in the property located at 57 R Randall Street, Easton, Mass. The purpose of the taking is conservation and passive recreation purposes. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on this matter in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, Town Office's 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on March 25th at 6:00 p.m., at which time the Board will vote on a taking.
Is Jay going to lead us in this, or are you Connor?
Sure. So Town Council Jay Tallerman is here if the Board has any questions, but attached in your packet is a variety of information from Council, our office, as well as Conservation Commission relating to this hearing. As the Board will recall, with support of Conservation Commission, you put forward an article at the November Town Meeting last fall authorizing the Board to acquire a small, mostly landlocked portion of land off the Clifford Grant Management area. Some background, this has been a public trail being used for many, many, many years, and only recently, in the past couple of years, was it discovered that inadvertently a portion of this trail is on private property. That property is 57 R Randall Street. Let me just pull up the notes here, I apologize. Due to the complexities of the title, for that property, Council has advised a friendly taking would be a more appropriate and cleaner way to acquire the land than going through the kind of voluntary paperwork between parties. There's numerous owners spread around the United States, as you saw from the copies of the notices that were mailed to each of them in your packet from Council. And so this is something that Concom has worked on for a long time, and Town Meeting voted on, and if a Board moves forward with a proposed motion to acquire, that's in your packet, will start the process for acquisition of this land, which will then kind of be absorbed by the surrounding conservation land and lead to reopening the public trail, which has been a priority for some time. It is a hearing, I'm unsure if any additional Butters or property owners are here. We do know that Mr. Doyle is here, and that he and his wife, who are partial owners of this property, did submit a letter in support of a friendly taking that's in your packet that the Board does have.
Okay. Do we have any other of the property owners here tonight? Okay, just Mr. Doyle. All right, does any of the Board members have any questions?
No.
I think this was pretty explanatory, self-explanatory in here. I think it was a good way to be able to solve this problem. It's good for the Butters, and I think it makes it cleaner to have this happen. Sometimes when you read eminent domain, people get a little bit nervous around that word. So this was a friendly collaborative way to solve that problem. So that means there won't be trespassing on the Butters' properties with people that go off the trails. So, all right, if there's no-
We have someone with their hand raised here on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Can you read that?
They were asked to talk.
So it's a, because it's a hearing, they can be moved into the speaking portion. I would just recommend they be given a finite amount of time and be informed and need to give their name and address for the record.
Okay.
I will promote them to a panelist now. And then I'll reassign them to an attendee after they're done speaking. Okay. They should be able to unmute. You can just ask them to unmute.
I can't see.
You can unmute, just because they don't have their video on.
Oh, okay.
They can speak now, they're unmuted.
All right, if you could just announce your name and address, and then just briefly, briefly share your comments or questions.
Yeah, my name is Peter Doiny, excuse me, 54 Sherwood Lane in Lakeville. And I am one of the property owners, but we have never had a response to the concerns we addressed about the proposed value assigned to this taking. That was a few months ago. The town's appraisal references the ability value of the real estate itself, but does not mention or adjust for any additional value for 10 years of unauthorized use and trespass. Your town's obtaining a DEP file number and permit representing the property without our consent, which has now resulted in recorded obligations and exposing us to 10 years' worth of liability should anyone have been injured. We feel that this is only compensatory value that is not reflected yet nor adjusted in the final price proposed by the town to take this parcel. Also, what about the back part of parcel 61 that has also been trespassed on, including dismantling the stone wall, but is not part of this taking?
Okay.
That's it.
I will, I'm going to defer to our Town Council. This is a little bit more than I am knowledgeable about.
Right. So, again, Jay Tallerman, Town Council. So the value in an eminent domain taking is based solely on an appraisal, and it is not the end of the valuation. The appraisal also does not consider what potential future liability could lie or could be predicted. That is just not part of that process. It is a fair market value determination. To the extent that there is other liability out there, there's other remedies for that. To the extent that any property owner from whom land is taken has an issue with our appraisal in terms of the amount of it, they've got three years to challenge it, and there's a deliberate process under Chapter 79 for that that doesn't undo a taking, it just gives a remedy for future consideration. Our notice of the taking that will be sent to all those with a property interest or all those with an encumbrance on the property will be alerted to their rights under the taking statute to challenge for up to three years. That's all required. Everyone gets redundant notice every step of the way.
Okay. All right, does, do you have any other questions, or does that satisfy?
I move them back.
Oh, okay.
We can move them back in if you would like.
I don't want to do a lot of back and forth on this. If it's going to be more than a brief comment, if there's more than that, we'll have to take that offline.
We'll have to raise their hand.
Then you'll have the formal procedure, as Jay said, to be able to challenge that.
They don't have their hand raised again, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll sit right here just in case, because you still have the motion in front of you to me, so if there's any questions.
Any other comments or questions from anybody in the audience? All right. Craig, do you want to read the motion?
Excuse me. I hereby move that the Select Board acquire by eminent domain for the purposes of conservation and passive recreation purposes, the land known as partial 16 and 17, shown our plan entitled Plan of Land in Easton, Mass. owned by the heirs of Nathan Randall, prepared by E.B. and C.L. Hayward Civil Engineers, and recorded in the Bristol North County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 13, page 65, has authorized pursuant to Article 6 of the Easton Special Town Meeting of November 13, 2023, and further to authorize the Select Board chair, Dottie Full Genetti, to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property, including but not limited to the execution and recording of an order of taking. And I hereby move the Select Board to ward damages for said eminent domain taking the amount of $37,000.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb. Is this a roll call vote, or just?
It does not have to, yes, because there's a Zoom component, then.
We'll do a roll call vote, starting with you, Jamie.
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
So that's unanimous. All right, thank you. And thank you for being here in person tonight, Mr. Doyle. Thank you to the caller on the phone, and as Attorney Tallerman said, you'll get a package in the mail with more information.
Thanks too for your conservation agent who's been pursuing this for a long time. Jen's done a lot of work here.
Thank you, Jen Carlino, for your excellent work here. Thanks for reminding me that, Jay. All right, next we have a public hearing for the application of LTP Pickleball LLC. Craig will read the notice.
The Select Board of Easton, as licensing authorities, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, March 25, 2024, at 6:05 p.m. to consider and inform the application of the LTP Pickleball LLC for a new Section 12 on-premises restaurant, all alcoholic beverage license, for premises located at 7 Loess Lane, Easton, Mass. with a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
Okay. So this is an application of LTP Pickleball LLC for a new Section 12 on-premises restaurant, all alcoholic beverages licensed, and common victualers licensed for the premises situated at 7 Loess Lane in Easton. We do have the application in our packet, and it's, the application has been circulated to town departments for review. So, welcome tonight, and I've heard all the rumblings and the excitement and enthusiasm building up on social media, so it's nice to finally meet you all in person. If you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing, and keep in mind, people at home are very interested, so give us, give us everything you've got.
Well, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
We plan on opening a pickleball facility with eight courts. Also want to have a pro shop and a bar/restaurant area.
Excellent.
And we plan to have early hours so people can play early in the morning and later in the evening, you know, after work, if they want to play after work.
And this is indoor?
Indoor, yes.
Okay. When do you expect to open?
Probably shooting for fall, October 1st.
Okay. Is it membership-driven, or open to the public?
We're going to have memberships. There'll be three different levels of memberships, so we'll get all that information out, but yeah.
And?
So it'll be open to the public to also drop in play, so anybody can come in and drop in and play at any time. We'll have pros, so if you want to learn how to play pickleball, you know, we'll have different level pros to try and teach you.
Great. And it's all woman-owned?
It is, all women.
That's great, congratulations. Anybody have any questions, Jamie?
I'm excited. So, I, it's funny when we talk about pickleball and trying to find a court now, it's at a premium, and to have this combination of both indoor and then also the restaurant and bar, I think it's fantastic. I think it opens it up to a social experience, and really just that experience, not just pickleball, which is a lot of fun. I've got a seven, oh, nine, 11, 13 now that are all playing as well, so they're starting young and playing late into life, and it's just, it's a fantastic, I think, sport. So thank you very much, I'm excited that you guys are building this here in Easton, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo that, that this is a really exciting thing to be bringing to the community, and I look forward to possibly taking some lessons, because that's something that's been my barrier personally. And all women-owned is fantastic, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all three of you. It's pretty amazing, exciting. Is there any other indoor pickleball facility that has this, quite this setup? I've never heard of indoor with a restaurant and bar, and you guys are creating something entirely new.
Just in this area, there's not.
Okay.
Moving to the south door.
Sounds like it'll be wildly successful.
Craig?
This is located at 6 Loess Lane, which is on 138 where the old Edmonds-
Yes.
movers were. Okay, all right. Yeah, I have a lot of friends who are always looking for places to play pickleball.
Oh, good.
So this is exciting to hear.
I think it's great to be in that part of town, because there's, you know, there's not a lot of attractions to do things down there, so that will bring a lot more, you know, traffic to that area. While Jen's taking lessons, I'll be in the restaurant holding-
[laughing]
So, let me see, the zoning board of appeals, the applicant will need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals and site plan review from the planning and zoning board. Additionally, the applicant must also submit an approved septic plan reflecting the new use and file for the appropriate permits with the building department for the construction of the new facility. So, any, would you like to make a motion, Craig, or?
So, move to approve the application of LTP Pickleball LLC for a new Section 12 on-premises restaurant and all alcoholic beverage license and common victualers license for premises located at 7 Loess Lane, Easton, Mass., depending on all of the appropriate permits and approvals.
Great.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, we'll do a roll call vote.
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Excellent, and so I just want to say the three owners, Rhonda Postcar, if I mispronounce, I apologize, Heather Taxara and Lindsay Locke, as well as Attorney Matthew Porter, so thank you all for being here.
Easy.
Congratulations.
[laughing]
Have I not spoken at a hearing? Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
In Easton.
Just popped in.
All right, next we have, is it, oh, it's only quarter past 6:00. Let's do some one-day liquor licenses while we wait. So the first one is My Brothers Keeper fundraiser, Spring Together 2024. This is at 534 Washington Street, April 26th, at 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., with a rain date of April 27th. So if you want to come up, this is My Brothers Keeper.
No, I had a question about the previous scale of ceiling.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand.
Because I live at 73 Pine Street, directly behind the property there.
Okay.
And I'm probably the most affected to this, and I just had a couple of questions and requests from the builder. I know he's with the property, restaurant owners, but the builder, I was going to request a certain type of lighting.
Can we have him, his name and address, please?
Sure.
We can take these.
Let me get your name and address. I really apologize, I didn't see you raise your hand, doctor.
I don't oppose the restaurant at all, just a couple requests because I'm a Butter. My name's Stephen DiCosta, 73 Pine Street, Southeaston, Mass.
Okay. So we were just voting on the license and the common victual license and the liquor license, so anything that has to do with the building or the planning would have to go to the planning department and work with the developer through that way. We don't vote on that.
Sorry, I know, I got a certified letter, I, you know.
Sure.
It said, "Those who cannot attend written testimony do so."
But it's pertaining to the liquor license and the common victual.
All right, so this is useless.
I'm not trying to be insensitive to what you're asking, but I want to make sure that you're able to get your comments to the correct part.
Okay.
If you'd like, sir, you can send an email to the, a letter to that email there about the hearing notice, and we can forward it to the applicant.
Okay.
And we'll make sure, we can send you a link to sign up for notices when it goes to Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is where the hearings will be held regarding the use of the actual site.
Okay.
So that we can make sure your comments are given to the developer as well as put them in record.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we will go to My Brothers Keeper.
Hi, Frank.
Hello. Welcome, if you'd just please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your event.
I'm Frank Altieri of Chubbell Town Brewery, Northeaston, Mass.
My name is Paul Keam, Chief Development Officer at My Brothers Keeper.
Great. So you have the spring fundraiser on April 26th from 5:00 to 11:00. Is that invitation only, or open to the public?
This is open to the public, yes.
Okay. So tell us a little bit about it, about what is My Brothers Keeper. Probably everybody watching this knows, but it's a good opportunity. You've just moved into a new location and expanded?
We've expanded our space at 5:30.
Okay.
Yes.
And just tell us a little bit about the fundraiser, and how people can buy tickets, and?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit Christian ministry. For the past 35 years, we've been serving families in the area in need, predominantly through a furniture assistance program, Christmas assistance. Over the past 15 years or so, food assistance has become the biggest part of what we do. So altogether, between those three services, made over 18,000 deliveries last year, serving over 62,000 children and adults. So we raise about $3 million a year to support these programs. Almost a third of those funds are generated through six fundraising events that we hold. Our Spring Together event is fairly new, this is our third year. The first two years, we held it at Six String in Foxborough. We decided, since we've got this beautiful newly expanded space, to host the event at our facility on Washington Street this year. And so it is open to the public. We try to make it as accessible as possible in terms of ticket price, so the early bird price is $50, that's per ticket, and that's good up until the 31st of this month, and in June it's up to $75. But just to give you an idea of the scope of the importance financially for this, last year, after expenses, we generated about $125,000. So these events go a long way in helping us be able to serve, serve the local community in need. So we're excited to have it. People who are interested in exploring or coming to the event, you can buy tickets online at mybrotherskeeper.org. And again, that, that early bird pricing is available till March 31st, and we'll be selling tickets right up until the date of the event. We had about 250 people come to the event last year, we're expecting probably at least 300 this year.
Great. And I'm sure you take donations outside of your events for people that would like to contribute financially, or you take furniture donations of new furniture?
We do. New and gently-used furniture, for sure, and financial donations always, yes.
Okay, great. Well, it sounds like it's going to be a wonderful event, and you do amazing work for the community. The types of people that this help are people that are, you know, transitioning to their first-time apartment, coming from different situations, whether it be fire or moving, transitioning from previous living in other areas and things like that, so it really makes a big difference.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just, I want to, your opportunities, are you looking for throughout the year volunteers to help distribution, things like that?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we have our flagship facility here in Easton, we have a facility in Dartmouth as well. Between those two facilities, we only have 18 paid employees, and so to make 18,000 deliveries, can't do it with 18 employees. So we have about 5,000 volunteers who come through our doors each year between those two facilities to help us make all this possible, so we're always looking for volunteers. You know, our operating hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00, which doesn't make it super convenient for those who are working, but students, those who have flexible work schedules, retired, some are retired, always happy to speak with them. During Christmas, during the month of December, we are open seven days a week, and there are a lot more opportunities to volunteer during the Christmas season.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for asking that.
Anyone else? All right, I just would want to mention and remember the founder who passed away this year, Jim Orca, and I just would be remiss if I did not express some gratitude to him and his family for starting this.
Thank you.
And Dottie, just in remembrance, Dr. Chris Corey too, who I know was a big volunteer-
Absolutely.
-who also passed away this past December, so he spoke very highly of the organization, so thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, Craig?
I move to approve the My Brothers Keeper's fundraiser, Spring Together 2024, 534 Washington Street, Easton, April 26th, 2024, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., with a rain date of April 27th.
Second.
Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
All right, congratulations, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Let me see, we're at 6:23, we can probably do one more, for Stonehill College Cross-Country Track and Field Alumni Event, 320 Washington Street, April 27th, 2024, 11:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., with a rain date of April 28th, 2024, and police detail is not required. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, would you like to make a motion, Craig?
Move to approve the Stonehill College Cross-Country Track and Field Alumni Event, 320 Washington Street, April 27th, 2024, 11:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., with a rain date of April 28th, 2024.
Second.
Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Excellent, and let's just do Langwater also while you're here, so come on up.
I see you have a busy evening here, so be quick. Hey, how are you guys? Thanks for having me.
Introduce yourself.
Kevin O'Dwyer from Langwater Farm.
Excellent, so we have, we have a slate here of events, so Langwater Farm is at 215 Washington Street, and I'm just going to quickly read what's in the packet. The Strawberry Festival is June 15th, 2024, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., with a rain date of June 16th. The Tulip Festival is May 4th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., with a rain date of May 5th. Spring Food Festival, April 6th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., with a rain date of April 7th. Community Pizza Nights on May 24th, 4 p.m. to 8 p.m., with a rain date of May 25th. June 21st, 4 p.m. to 8 p.m., with a rain date of June 22nd. July 26th, 4 p.m. to 8 p.m., with a rain date of July 27th. August 23rd, 4 to 8 p.m., with a rain date of August 24th, and September 13th, 4 to 8, with a rain date of September 14th. So this is pretty exciting.
Yeah, it should be a-
Big slate of events.
-fun series of events coming up here, and the first one's in two weeks, so a week from this coming Saturday, that'll be the Spring Food Festival, and we'll be highlighting some of the other producers that we, that we have their offerings in our store, and sort of the end of the winter vegetable season and some of the early spring stuff to come. And then the Tulip Festival in May, the beginning of May after that, and that'll be, it's always been fun, we planted 50,000 bulbs in November.
Wow.
And they all look great, we've kept the deer off them so far, and so it should be-
There's no easy task.
It should be fun. It's not an easy task, it might be their favorite thing to eat, I've learned. So anyway, yeah, it looks like it should be a fun summer of events.
That's terrific.
Looking forward to it.
Any comments or questions?
I'm excited, yes, so many opportunities for the family to get out and be at the farm, which is fantastic too, so thanks, Kevin.
Great, thanks for your support, guys.
I'm excited, because I can walk to it. They're pretty busy. This says there'll be an Eastern Police Detail required for the Community Pizza Nights, as in the past, but not for the festivals.
We plan to get one for each of those events.
Okay. All right, yeah, because they're very well-attended, which is great.
Yeah.
Craig, I'm sorry, I didn't ask if you have-
That's okay, I'm just going to, we'll do it as a slate.
Yep.
Yeah, so I've just moved to approve the Langwater Farm, 215 Washington Street, the slate of all these events.
Second.
That's Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Excellent.
Thanks very much for all your support, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have Amy, or?
May, but it's still, you're four minutes out, I think.
Oh.
So I believe Mr. Bararty may be here, yes?
Okay, excellent, we'll do that. All right, so item five, we have an appointment to the Public Spaces Committee, Michael Bararty. This is a term expiration of June 30th, 2026. So Mr. Bararty, if you'd like to come up to the table?
Be careful for the cords.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
And if you just want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in joining the Public Spaces Committee?
Oh, sure, I just moved here in November, so I just figured I'd get involved in the town and try to help things along, so hopefully. the town and, uh, try to help things along. So hopefully, um, I worked in the biotech industry for 27 years. I'm retired now, so.
Well, that's excellent.
Yeah.
Well, we have a, a lot of boards and committees, so I'm glad that you were able to find something that had an opening that interests you. Um, just for, for people that don't know, the mission of the Public Spaces Committee is to promote the preservation, care, and pride of the Town of Easton's public spaces through the creation of formal public spaces adoption process, to facilitate a u- uniform signage that'll be applied to adopted public spaces, to raise awareness of citizen and business participation in the preservation improvement of our shared spaces, and to hold dear the beautiful public spaces which the community has been afforded. And, uh, there is a list of tasks here. Um, this is all noted on, on the, um, on the town's website. So we're glad that you, that you volunteered. We love to see new faces, new people that, um, you know, can lend a hand.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments by the board?
No, thank you for, uh, coming out and volunteering.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Craig?
I move to appoint Michael Bararty to the Public Spaces Committee with a term expiration of June 30th, 2026.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb.
Stevens, yes. Or Stevens, Bararty.
Stacy, Bararty.
Lamb, Bararty.
Full Janetti, Bararty.
Bodger, Bararty.
Excellent. So the town clerk will send you some information on getting sworn in and when the next meeting will be.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are at 6:29. Uh...
Sure. Uh, Dottie, we'll, we'll go grab Amy, uh, our guest from home.
Excellent.
Do you have the certificate?
Yes.
How are ya? Sorry.
Thanks. Can we get this thing fixed? Moved. Give it to somebody else.
So Amy, if you want to sit there?
Yeah.
Are you John? If you want to sit with Amy up here?
Yeah.
You want to come sit here?
Hi, welcome.
Hi, everyone. This is John Januskas.
Hi, John.
Hello, John.
Hi, John.
So, thanks for being here tonight, everybody. This is a very exciting night. If people have, uh, come in and noticed in the hallway, you'll see some new artwork on the wall.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi, John.
And Amy, do you want to introduce, um, the program?
Yeah, sure, sure. So this is, um, a program that Connor asked me to, to start, um, about six months ago. And, um, we're really excited. The Easton Shovel Town Cultural District and Town of Easton are excited to launch, um, an Artist on Display Initiative at Town Hall to celebrate and showcase the creative works and talents of local artists. The initiative features a rotating display of artwork for the enjoyment and appreciation of the public, um, and honors the important role that art plays in our community. Um, and we started the initiative, um, with a display of beautiful artwork by two emerging artists, one of them here, John Januskas.
That's me.
Yeah, and, and Ray Harris, who couldn't be here tonight. But, um, they, uh, have been wonderful to share their love of art and their artwork with us. Um, for the next, they'll be, they'll be up for, uh, through April. Um, so we just, you know, uh, really, we want to thank Connor, we want to thank the select board here for giving us the opportunity to showcase local artists and, um, their creative works. Um, and for, you know, just giving a platform, uh, where you can bring art into our everyday lives, right? We know that art is good for us, um, right? Just the, not just for those of us that create it, but for those that view it. Um, it reduces stress levels. It's good for us. It's, um, you know, sparks imagination and creativity and, um, helps us to understand and appreciate other perspectives and artistic expression. So, um, you know, thank you again for the opportunity to bring that to Town Hall. And, um, if there are any, um, local artists that are interested in being con- considered, um, then, you know, um, there's more information on our webpage at, um, easton.m-a.us/shoveltownculturaldistrict. So take a look. Um, and thank you so much, John, for coming tonight.
No problem.
Just here with his family. And, um, House of Possibilities is having an art show coming up, April 11th.
April 11th, yeah.
At 6:00 PM. Yes, so all are welcome to see more artwork by John and, um, any of the other members there as well, so.
So Amy, I just want to thank you. Amy Rodriguez is our liaison to the Cultural District and, uh, you've done amazing work. Uh, we also had partnership with the House of Possibilities to exhibit at our art gallery. So this is a really strong relationship that we value. Um, we think the artwork is amazing and we really thank you for, uh, collaborating with us on that. John, did you want to say anything?
Good evening. It's been, it is John, it's, I'm John Januskas and, and I'm a really good artist. And, um, I love to paint. Um, I don't know what else I need to paint for the, um, for the art show. And I'm really excited. Yes.
So, so that'll be exciting for people that want to go to the House of Possibilities art show because we'll be able to see more of your work there. Right? Excellent. Well, what I'd love to do is, um, give you this certificate. Whoops, this certificate. Let me come around. This is a certificate of appreciation. It certifies and acknowledges that John Januskas, that's you, for artistic contributions to the Town of Easton, March 25th, 2024. And it's signed by me and by Connor Reed. So congratulations. What I'd like to do is to take a brief recess so that we could go out into the hall and take a look at the artwork and, uh, get some pictures. I, I do want to mention, um, in the enthusiasm for getting out and getting the picture, we did have another artist who couldn't be here tonight, but Ray Harris also has artwork out in the hall. And we want to thank Ray and his family for, uh, contributing to that as well. So next, we have, um, the establishment of the Swift's Park Gift Fund for the park redevelopment and the acceptance of gifts to the Swift's Park Gift Fund. So.
Uh, sure. Sorry, one moment. Um, so the select board will recall at your meeting on February 5th, the co-chairs of the Swift's Park Committee, uh, John Ventresco and Ed Hands, who are here tonight as well, made a presentation on a proposed redevelopment of Swift's Park on Foundry Street. During the presentation, they indicated that the committee intended to seek private donations to help offset some of the, uh, cost of a park redevelopment. To date, they've received $550 in donations and, uh, there's two, uh, items in front of you related to this agenda, uh, item, which is, uh, one, a vote to accept the donation, uh, and two, to establish a gift fund for Swift's Park so that funds may be donated without having to be voted on every time.
Okay.
Uh, there's a memo, I believe, in your packet from Stephanie Danielson, who is, uh, as well as, uh, Ed Hands and John Ventresco, that have a, a proposed motion as well. I know that, uh, Ed and John are here.
Okay.
Board has any questions?
Um, any comments or questions from the board?
No, you're ahead.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, rather, the, the way this works is that when, uh, there is a gift, it always has to go before the select board to vote on it. So, um, when we know that there is going to be, um, hopefully numerous generous donations made, we want to make that as easy as possible so we don't have to, uh, vote each one that comes in. So I think it makes a lot of sense to do this. Um, did either one of you want to make any comments before we vote?
Uh, no, we feel exactly the same way as you do.
Okay, excellent. All right. Um, Craig, there's
So I move that the select board vote to accept the gifts received from Ed Hands and Shane Caledonia in the amount of $550 and to establish a gift account to accept further donations for the purposes, uh, for the purpose of funding costs associated with the Swift's Park redevelopment project.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
Bodger, yes.
Excellent. Thank you for being here tonight and thanks for all the great work you're doing on that committee.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, uh, presentation by ECAT, uh, their annual report. Kim, you want to come up?
Hi, okay. Ah, thanks for having me.
You're not usually on this side of the, uh, the camera, right?
That is very true. Um, yeah, so this is, I'm happy to be here to talk about ECAT today. I think we've, um, done a lot of good, made a lot of progress over the last year. Um, this is our mission statement for anyone who might not be aware of it. Um, for programming, these are the number programs. Um, the biggest area that's expanded in 2023 would be the original programs for the public channel. Um, and we've had an increase in the number of residents interested in making their own shows and the frequency with which they make shows. So we've had more weekly shows than we had in the past. Um, these are examples of some of the programs that have done well on social media. We can't track viewership on our channels themselves, but we can track our social media viewership. Um, so we're averaging over 23,000 views a month on YouTube, which I think is pretty good.
I don't see select board meetings as you're talking about.
Careful what you wish for.
No, that's great. Two and a, 2.5 thou- two, two and a half thousand, uh, views for OA Tigers versus Melrose Boys Soccer Playoffs. Uh, so I guess the sports and the schools and the lighting of the rockery are the top ones.
Yeah, the Eastons Got Talent, that's, um, a local resident, um, that actually started from our middle school workshops. So one of the kids and her parent, uh, found out about what we do through the middle school workshops and decided to do their own show. Um, and it's, you know, obviously a version of America's Got Talent. So it's a talent show and they bring in different people. And this summer is going to be the second year of it. So.
That's terrific. What a great story, uh, starting with middle school. You know, I think that you have so many programs. So, um, to have people continue it on through early learning into something bigger is really great.
Thank you. Yeah, so one of the things that we added this year is these, um, channel identifications. So they're on all the time on each channel. And that way you can tell which one you're watching. Um, and we also added at the top and bottom of the hour identifiers. And that tells you what channel you're watching, what channel numbers they are, the website address. Um, and so that, again, helps people know where they are, what they're looking at. And we also added, um, you are watching and coming up next graphics. Um, we don't have a, we're not on the programming guide for cable, so the TV guide.
Yeah.
So we need to make it clear for people what they're watching ourselves. Um, so I think that's been helpful. Um, and we have increased our closed captioning. And we're expanding that a little more this year. So it's going to be on more of the government meetings.
I noticed, um, on, w- watching it earlier, that you also are identifying that it is a select board meeting and you have the names of the speakers.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So that's being done in real time. So that's great.
Thank you. Um, we have, I don't know if everyone is aware of our news program, but we have a half hour news program that comes out every Friday night at 6:00 PM. Um, and it airs, you know, periodically throughout the week at other times, but it always premieres Fridays at 6:00. Um, and so that's a good way for people to get local news. Um, we have our film festivals. The Hockamock Film Festival is for high school kids. And that's for any kids, um, attending schools or residing in the towns in the Hockamock Sports League. Um, last year we had 64 entries. Um, I'm expecting to have around or maybe exceed that this year. Um, and we also have a film sprint. And that one is for all ages so that we're not restricting our, our film opportunities just for high school students. And that one, you have 48 hours to, uh, complete a film. So.
Right.
Uh, the sports, we're doing pretty much all of the varsity home games. There's a few sports that are exceptions, really just, um, ski, golf, um, and track. And that's just logistics, you know? Um, and we've improved a little, the look of those quite a bit. So you get, um, live scoreboards, graphics, some replays. Uh, they're most, they're pretty much all multi-camera.
Great.
Uh, we brought back Tuesday Triviality. So I don't know, some of you may remember that. That was a show that predated ECAT, but it was on the Comcast channel in Easton. It's a live call-in trivia show. Uh, so that's been fun. We started working more with Stonehill, so we're recording their library talks. Uh, and those are a few, Easton 300, Drew's Adventure History TV, Liberty at Home. Those are a few examples of resident-produced programs that were new this past year. Easton 300 is for the Tricentennial.
Yep.
Um, and Drew's Adventure History TV is actually someone we got who started working with us, who found out about us through Hope. So.
Oh, great.
Um, and Hope comes in every other week to produce their own news program that they use internally. Um, we're helping do the Oliver Ames Weekly News, which also comes out on Fridays. Uh, we've been helping with some training for the EMS media teachers. Um, and any resident is welcome to come in and get training on any aspect of production that they like. We've had some people take us up on that. And we have middle school workshops every February and April. Those are free. Um, and the students create little short films that we then air on the channels. Um, these are some of the policies and procedures that we have. Um, we have been doing incident reports just to keep track of where any problems are so that we're better able to fix those problems. We've been expanding our standard operating procedures so that people have a guide for how to do things. And it just makes it easier on the staff and hopefully reduces any issues when we're in the fields. Um, and we've increased staff training, both internally and with some of the vendors that we use. And that's some of what we've done this past year.
That's terrific.
Thank you.
And so in our packet, we also have the budget
Mm-hmm.
that you, that you did. And that, uh, you know, it looks like everything is pretty strong.
Thank you.
On that. Um, I would just say, is this your one year or two year, being the director?
Um, it's about one and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've done a great job since, since you've started. Um, I just want to really, um, make note of that.
Thank you.
Um, the three camera at the different events is really a game changer. And I know that you didn't have it on there, but, um, because I'm chair of the Cultural District, when we have the summer concert series, you usually have three or four people there with cameras. It's fun, but it's work for you also. And, um, you do get a lot of people out to, of your team to take, uh, video of all the different events. So I've noticed that. And I just want to show my appreciation for it.
Thank you. Yeah, we try to be anywhere we can be. And if anybody has any events or productions that they'd like us to be involved with, just let us know.
And the other thing that was in our packet that I think is really noteworthy, that I'm very happy about because we've been asking for this, was listening devices at the high school. So for town meeting now, if people are hearing impaired, they just need to let us know. And we will, um, get them listening devices so that they, they can help. And, uh, I think, um, if these are, if, if they're being streamed or live cast on Facebook, you can automatically see the closed captioning on that.
Yes.
So if people wanted to see closed captioning, you can't do it on the big screen there, but you could put out, pull out your own device or take your own tablet and read the closed captioning there. So, um, I think that that's a big step forward for our accessibility. And, um, I know it means a lot to people.
Thank you.
Jamie?
I just want to say the live streaming is amazing because we followed, especially as, I think the soccer teams, uh, girls and boys were making their runs. It was fantastic. When we couldn't make the pilgrimage out to those neutral sites that you, that you folks were there. I mean, that was just an amazing, uh, tool you provided with, for so many families. So, thank you. It's, the, the work you guys do behind the scenes doesn't go unnoticed. It's a lot.
Thank you.
And that, in, in addition, the resources online are just fantastic. I go back all the time and watch things. And, um, you know, it's just a great resource to have. And I don't know when it changed, but in the studio, the new setup with the TV and being able to watch and whatnot is fantastic. I don't know how long ago that changed, but.
Well, we just redid the studio.
Okay, it's awesome.
Now, um, we have the ability to have virtual sets. You can have, uh, hybrid Zoom meetings. We have teleprompters now. So it's, it's a lot
It was a huge game changer. So fantastic work.
Yeah, in, you said a year and a half you've been in this position?
About, yeah.
You've accomplished a lot in a year and a half.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you. Uh, it's, the, the quality has increased and it's been very noticeable. Um, and you've just done an outstanding job. I'm surprised it's only been a year and a half. I would have guessed, I mean, I, I know it's only been a year and a half, but the amount of work that you've done and accomplished is, should have taken a lot longer.
Thanks.
New website, too.
We very much appreciate the work you've done, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did have a note here that Connor was kind enough to point out, acknowledging that, um, that you and ECAT are working to install necessary broadcast equipment in the renovated first floor meeting room shortly, which will enable, um, boards and committees in Easton to use a second fully hybrid capable meeting room at town offices. And we appreciate your colla- collaboration on that. Also, I'd like to just call out on April 6th, um, the Shovel Town Cultural District is working with ECAT to help host an art fair, um, art show. And that'll be an opportunity for the public also to come in and see the new, um, broadcasting rooms that you have there.
Yeah, and we'll have a live show going on so people can see the artists and find out about the art show and hopefully come down.
Right. Excellent.
Excellent.
All right. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. And, uh, it's nice to get these reports. Um, and, uh, I think it's, it's great for the public to be able to see and hear everything that you're doing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
All right. Next, we have the Easton Public Safety, Public Works Facility Replacement Project Update with PMA Consultants and Castle Booze.
Greg. Sure, thanks, Dottie. Well, our owner's project manager and our designer get the presentation queued up. Uh, as the board is aware, we've been working on this project for a couple of years now. Voters approved the funding for the construction of new police fire and public works throughout Easton last November. Uh, municipal building committee has been working diligently, meeting, uh, at least monthly with the design team, with our staff and the project team as they have gone through the design development process to start, uh, really drilling down on the programmatic needs of these buildings, tightening up the layout. tightening up the layout, the entrances, and some of the exterior look as we start getting ready for, I believe, a target of bidding later this year in the fall. And we're at a place where it made some good sense for the board to get an update from PMA and KBA on where things stand.
Excellent. Thanks for being there.
Welcome, Walter. Welcome, Greg.
It's been a couple of weeks.
Yep, been a few weeks. So thank you for having us. I'll give a quick overview of what we're going to go over. So master project schedule update, DD, so Design Development Phase Work Plan status. And I'll turn it over to Greg from there to go over a design update on the three facilities, an update of where we're at in the programming and designing, and then a quick update on Radio Tower. And then we can open it up to any questions you guys have.
Great.
So we have a master project schedule update, really highlighting the design development phase. We are nearing the end of that phase, so the end of that phase wraps up with the drawings and specifications going over to the estimators, so we can put professional estimators' numbers to the project and ensure that the project is tracking within budget. That occurs on April 15th. Until that time, and after that time, we'll be working together to develop any possible value management options that might be necessary to bring the project within budget, hopefully not necessary. But we do develop those options, review them with the Municipal Building Committee, and present them to them. So this is really a snip of 524 Depot Street, which is the Public Safety Building and the DPW. A quick snip of right now, what we're calling 327 Main Street, which is the Fire Substation. At the current time, these two projects are tracking on the same timeline. What's going to happen at the end of this design development phase, and really will be the only schedule shift potentially, would be that these projects are being currently bid at the same time or tracked in the schedule at the same time. There may be a decision to potentially push the Fire Substation out to an earlier bid package, if it makes sense. Right now, we've been speaking with general contractors who we've heard mostly that they may feel that there may be some appetite for the larger project, all projects combined into one. There may be some cost efficiencies for them, which could lead to some potential cost savings for the town. So we'll be asking the estimators to put some numbers together for that while also garnering more feedback from general contractors across the state. That's really the design development phase highlights. From DD, we will have another round of estimating. We'll take those drawings to the 75% construction documents mark. I believe that's sometime in the middle of summer. We'll do another round of estimating, another round of potential value management, review the scope. And then from there, we would move into final construction documents and look, as Connor mentioned, late fall, early winter, looking for putting bid documents together and getting ready to go out on the street. With that, I will turn it over to Greg to go over really the...what happens in those phases and give you guys an update on design.
Sure, thanks, Walter. So I think you've all been through these processes before with the elementary school, so similar process here, just a lot more departments, a couple of different buildings, and a little bit more complicated on the sites. So additional site investigation has been done in this phase, so more geotechnical information has been gathered now that we have a better sighting of the building, along with test geothermal wells. So the project proposes geothermal wells on the site, so most of the work that you may have seen, particularly at Depot Street, is a geothermal test well. That kind of allows us to understand how efficient the wells that we're going to ultimately put in the ground to heat and cool the building can be. Results were good, so that's a positive sign. But that work is necessary so that as we enter into these estimates, the wells are relatively expensive, so we want to make sure we get the numbers right on how many we need upfront so that we don't have too many and have to make adjustments otherwise in the project, or don't have too few and end up needing more in the end. So a pretty thorough process of reviewing the site. At the same time, running in parallel tracks, going back, reviewing the programming with each individual department, bringing in user groups from those departments and making sure that we're hearing how the departments either operate now or would like to operate in the future, and incorporating that, you know, kind of each step of the way through the design. And the design, right, is an inter-process. These don't necessarily change, right, but the design evolves over time to meet all of those needs that we're hearing about and getting incorporated in. We take that and we go back and estimate, make sure we're on budget, and then we'll proceed into construction documents. And that's really the process of us fine-tuning the design, making sure that everything is accounted for in a biddable document, and putting that out to bid. We assist with PMA in the bidding process, answering questions throughout the process, and then ultimately into Construction Contract Administration, where PMA is kind of your eyes and ears on the ground, and KBA makes sure the buildings are designed and built to specification and tracks the construction throughout as they all will be controlled construction. So just kind of big-picture steps on what we've done in DD. Many of these things are completed, and we'll finish completion as we finish the design development phase. We're on track to hit all of these milestones, and it is a fairly detailed process with a lot of interaction between the design team with the OPM's assistants and the owner through multiple different departments and focus groups. I would say, including the Building Committee, who has a big part in this. Number of focus groups happened, so particular focus groups on topics of particular interest during a project have taken place. We've gotten feedback, and that feedback has been incorporated into our presentations to the Building Committee, ultimately to consider while making decisions on the ultimate size, shape, look, fit-out of the buildings. At the same time, bi-weekly or weekly, design meetings with user groups have been gone going, and we're just about wrapping those up, making sure we're taking into account all of the needs of the departments. Just an overview for, you know, those who may be joining us that haven't seen this before. Two project sites, I think most here are familiar with it. The larger site is 524 Depot Street, and the smaller site is on Washington Street, just across from Hilliards on Stonehill's property. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about particularly Public Safety and 524 Depot Street. Many of you have seen renderings and things like that about what the building might look like. We're starting to really evolve those into the final design. And as we started to examine kind of how we approach things, we've looked particularly at the entry to the Public Safety Building. And originally, the entry was facing Depot Street, and the public parking is to the west, so on the right side of the building as you were looking at it. And we really had created a very long entry sequence to get into the building, so we looked at, you know, can we still keep the front appearance of the building, making sure that we address the street, making sure that it's a welcoming entrance, but kind of cut down on the long circulation of that kind of progression into the building and see if we can get something a little bit more workable. So just kind of, we're into 3D now at kind of large scale, so you can see kind of the scale of the buildings and the scale of the site now. So on the left-hand side of the image is the power line easement, public safety up front, the two crossings of the wetlands that connect back to the DPW kind of at the top of the screen. A little bit of just kind of how the buildings break down. So no surprise, blue is police, red is fire on the main level, so police patrol is generally on the main level. Fire, the apparatus bay, kind of is in the middle, and on the left-hand side is where the fire quarters are. At the front of the building, right, is the community room. So originally, the community room had been a little bit closer to the public parking, and the entry was around front, so we've just kind of taken those two elements and flipped them a little bit to get the entry sequence just a little bit more conducive to particularly visitor entry. Created a nice, open entry facing the parking lot, and also adjacent...sorry, addressing the street, which we'll see in a little bit. Upstairs is police admin, fire admin, across the apparatus bay, mezzanine for storage and training for the fire department. And a little bit about what these buildings start to look like. So very similar to what you've seen before, but we start to fine-tune the materials a little bit. And I should say that these are obviously still works in progress, right? We're not done yet. So this is looking east from the western side of the site. So as you're coming westbound on...sorry, eastbound on Depot Street and coming across the front facade. And this is basically at the intersection of Cross Street, looking back to the west across the front entry. Jumping back on the site to Public Works, so Public Works generally administration on the left-hand side, the kind of rather small part. As you go to the right across the bottom are the individual shops for different divisions, and in the back, the large vehicle storage area for all the vehicle storage for the departments. Again, mezzanine area for storage primarily in Public Works. And a little bit what Public Works starts to look like. Again, these are rather large, or at least Public Works is a rather large, pre-engineered metal building, so you'll see the scale here starts to get pretty big. But the entry, we've taken and given a little bit of attention to, to make sure that as you come into the site, people know where to enter the building. If they're coming to pay water bills or things like that, they know where to go. The building is secured, or the rest of the site is secured, so that public is only really allowed to that front piece. The rest of the site is kind of off into the side and fenced off during non-open hours. Jump quickly to Fire Substation, so again, corner of Washington and Main Street. This is very similar to what you've seen in the past. So across from Hilliards, the drawing is oriented north, and just quickly, one-story building with the apparatus bay kind of in the center. Some working area to the left and to the right is really the fire quarters. There is kind of minimal office space here, just basically a watchroom, and the rest is really quarters and firematic operations space. And a little bit like what that looks like. This station will have a small radio tower, relatively, approximately about 100 feet. They're relatively small, about three foot by three foot, and it'll likely be an articulated tower. Just kind of what that looks like a little bit. They're fairly small, not really noticeable generally, but that will be part of that buildings built up. Just, I'll turn it over to you, Walter, to just address some key dates. I think that's up to your questions.
Yeah, absolutely. I think probably important to hit before we jump to these key upcoming dates, that was a...we were here for that great presentation from ECAT. We will be coordinating with ECAT. That community room that you saw on the front of the Public Safety Building is going to be a great facility for the town of Easton to hold meetings such as this potentially. It's going...you guys in town, you...we don't have something that holds more than 20 but less than 300. That room holds about...
About 60.
About 60, so a great space for that type of size. But we will be coordinating with them to make sure that anything they need for their hookups will be within that building. The way that construction has changed and IT has changed over the last few years, most of the stuff is really going to be in scope already without even having spoken to them, but we will be sure to, and have already started to, reach out to them to make sure that their needs are met in that building so that these type of meetings can take place there. And then the other item I wanted to mention was that the Fire Substation, the team will be meeting with representatives of Stonehill who wanted to stay involved during the design process. That'll be an ongoing collaboration with that group to make sure that, you know, we're not putting up a building that has absolutely nothing to do with the Stonehill College surroundings and the architecture that takes place on that campus. So those are upcoming things and information that are definitely worthy of public note and the board's note. So really highlight some key dates for the project. That April 15th date, those drawings will be out with the estimators. April 23rd, we meet with the MBC to review those detailed design estimates once we get them back. Sorry, a detailed design...detailed design drawing update with the MBC. On May 13th, we review and receive the estimate reconciliation. We meet with the MBC on May 14th to go over that estimate and go over scope and what's in, what's out. On May 29th, we then meet to review and make final decisions on scope and budget to maintain that project budget. So that's really the key highlights of the end of the DD phase for the project. And the largest decision will be that schedule piece, whether Fire Substation is bid at the same time or if it's bid separately on an accelerated schedule.
So just, I just want to add, so that if people at home are watching this, we're trying to get our ratings up. For the MBC, that's the Municipal Building Committee, and those meetings are recorded on ECAT?
They are being held virtually right now.
Virtually?
And I believe they are being recorded.
Okay, so the public can participate and watch those meetings?
Absolutely.
Excellent. They're very interesting.
I find them interesting.
Again, we need to boost the ratings.
I do.
Next year, when they come back, I want to be in the top five.
Yeah.
Excellent. So questions and comments from the board?
I can't plug enough the Municipal Buildings Committee. I mean, it is just a fantastic watch, so take, if anyone's got the time, please tune in. I want to thank, you know, the team for last week when they presented this to Municipal Buildings Committee and the thoughtfulness put into the Training and Function Room and that access, right? There's a cost component to that extended walkway that we would have had to, you know, incur. So this is, along the way, I can't say enough how comforting it is to have PMA, have Castle Booze, you know, to have, and especially Walter and Greg both involved in this project. So we're very fortunate that we've had the relationship from the school project and that they continue to have that attention to detail that is second to none, so it's helping us dramatically.
Thank you.
Jim?
This is a fantastic update. It's exciting to start to see it, you know? Every step like this feels like a big step in the right direction. Just a small question. What does the wetlands, like, thing entail, where you have the...is it a...like a bridge essentially, or?
Yeah, there will be two bridges over the wetland areas so that we don't impact any of the wetland essentially. So there won't be any replication, you know, destruction and replication will essentially span over both portions of wetland with bridges.
Excellent. Thank you.
They summed it up very well. Very exciting. It's about two months from now, be closer to final design and all of that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Scope.
So you guys have a lot of work to do in the next two months, and I know you've been working really hard, and echo Jamie's comment, having both of you as part of this definitely helps, having worked with you guys for years. It definitely brings a comfort factor. Quick question, though. On the setbacks, what are the setbacks from the road right now? And is...will that change, or could that change?
In front of Public Safety Building, I'm assuming you're talking about...
In the firehouse.
And the substation.
Yes.
So the substation is a little bit further back because essentially, that's kind of a flat front, and so we set back approximately 65 feet, I'd say, because we want to be able to swing the ladder truck around in the front apron. Same thing applies at Public Safety, but that community room does come a bit closer, so the setback there would probably be about 50 feet, I'd say.
Okay.
Somewhere in that range, and I could be more specific later.
No, that's an approximation, Scott. I was just trying to get an idea of...I drive by there all the time, and I'm always...the way it sits right now, I visualize something like sitting way back, but that's not the case. It'll be up close.
No, it is fairly close out, so the required setback there, I believe, is 35 feet, and we are a bit behind that, but we're probably in the about 50-foot range.
Okay.
You know, 40 to 50-foot range to the community room. Again, that sticks out from the rest of the building. The rest is back another 20 or 30 feet. And the apparatus bay, I'd say, is farther back. It's about 65, 70 feet there. Again, so we can get that turning radius with the apparatus on the deck so that you don't have the situation like you have now in many cases where they have to pull onto the road to back the engine in. All that happens now off the deck, much safer.
That's good for that corridor, too, because that's...
Yes.
Wouldn't be possible at 5:00 in the afternoon or 8:00 in the morning.
I'm getting very excited. When you start seeing the pictures, the 3D drawings, et cetera, I also... When you start seeing the pictures, the 3D drawings, et cetera, I also appreciate very much the opportunity to sit in on your meetings. That's been very helpful, although I had no, no idea what you're talking about when you're doing the geothermal stuff, but you explained it to me, Greg, so I appreciate that. But can you tell me, what's an estimator? I mean, what, you say you have to go to an estimator?
The drawings, KBA, the drawings and specifications are put together by the designer with their consultants. They go to a professional, professional estimating firm. Both KBA, who is the Estimator Record, and PMA have a consultant that does professional estimating on construction projects. So they are full-time, looking at drawings, estimating, tracking bids, and putting numbers to projects, all the way down to what drywall costs to put up on a square foot basis. It is a full-time professional job, and it is a very difficult job, and it takes a long time. So it takes about two weeks for them to put an estimate set together, or an estimate together. And we, we put them through the wringer in our eight-hour reconciliation meeting, and then we follow up with them for about a week after that on value management options. Those options go to the NBC. Once the final decisions are made, we take all of that information, send it back to the estimators, they update that estimate, and we make sure that it is within that construction budget, which feeds overall into the total project budget.
And that assumes cost increases, et cetera? That's all built into the?
Everything. So they have, yeah, they carry what we call markups within their estimates, and those are a, you know, some things like bonds, insurance, overhead and profit, general conditions, general requirements that are part of the project. They carry those, and they're watching the market based on bids to develop those and fine tune those as the project develops. We also carry escalation to the time of bid, so that's included in those estimates as well to make sure that we're tracking to the correct time.
And your recommendation would be to do the whole project as one, or to divide it up between the substation and the, and the site?
I think right now, based on what we've heard, we would probably say that bidding as one would be beneficial, but we definitely want to reach out to a few more general contractors, gauge what they say, and then also pose that to the estimators as well and see what their recommendation is.
That's a huge, that's a huge project, especially when you add the two together.
Surprisingly, dollar-wise, it's, you know, in the
We're looking, yeah.
Hundred and $20 million range, hundred and $15 million range.
Yeah.
And
Substations about?
You know, that's, you know, the substation's about $15 million. And the place where we've had experience with either projects that have come in overbid or, you know, really close, when we would expect them to come in a little bit under, have been in that like 10 to 20 million range. So it's not necessarily that the commodities markets or any of those things are driving the price, but it's an issue with the amount of bidders who are out in the market immediately and available to do the work. So it's a, it's a judgment call that I think PMA is looking at closely. KBA will assist them in that. And then come back and make recommendation to the building committee for their consideration with the input from the estimators. So if PMA sees 100 jobs a year, if KBA sees 70 jobs a year, the estimators see about 300 jobs a year. So they just have a bigger database
Okay.
And know the, the overall market just a little bit. They just have a different view of the overall market. So it's important to make sure we get feedback from kind of all three groups to, you know, provide the information to the building committee to enable the town to make the best of it.
I think some standalone information, you know, I think PMA has recently seen a project where, you know, in, lower than the $15 million range, but we would have expected some competitive numbers, and I don't think we got any bids. We had to go out and rebid it. So that would certainly be an issue. We did see that specifically here when we bid the wastewater treatment plant. We had to go out again for bids, and they came in more than, within our, within the overall total project budget, but for that specific piece, I believe it was almost double what we were anticipating carrying for those costs.
Yep. So correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we've spoken extensively about this internally, and some of this is just due to scale, right? That there are far more, you know, seven and eight-digit projects being bid on the market and a smaller type of firm that is able to bid on those. And if you're getting fewer bids, it's less competitive, then they're either spread thin on other things, or they're, they aren't necessarily ready to stand that project up. Whereas these much larger projects, if you lump all the buildings together that are in excess of 100 million, you start to have a different, and I'm not making a value judgment of their skill, but a different class of GCs who are bidding on that, right? Is that fair?
Yep.
And
Capacity.
Yeah, different, a different level of capacity. And you, PMA, are OPM on some large, far larger, 200-plus million, I believe you're doing some quite large schools where you have seen actuals coming in closer to estimates on the bigger projects and having much more bidders and much more competition than the small ones. Is that fair?
Certainly a representative of what PMA's seen over the last few months, yeah.
And so, and something else I just want to ask you to explain a little bit more, just for the board and the public, if it's anyone's first time tuning in, the reason why we do estimating from two firms is KBA gets an estimate for, basically the design team's estimate, and PMA's job as the owner's rep is to get your own third-party estimate to cross-check against that, reconcile those figures, and it gives you a lot of information if those estimates are within, you know?
Yeah, we reconcile the, I want to say 15 to 20 uniformed divisions to within 5%. So, and that makes sure that the overall estimate reconciliation, the total construction is within 5%. That's the, the goal of the reconciliation. So sometimes estimators are carrying one item and other estimators may have missed it. We reconcile, make sure they're both carrying it, or if they don't need to be carrying it, some estimators are carrying something they don't need. That's really a big part of the reconciliation process as well.
And the goal there is basically to make sure that we have as tight assessment on these facts as possible before we're making budget decisions and putting bid packages out, because we obviously are guided by wanting this to be the most cost-effective construction project humanly possible.
Exactly.
Right?
I remember that part on the school, on the school planning, and it was fascinating to see the level of detail and how close, you know, the estimates were. So it's a really good set of checks and balances. I just wanted to comment, you know, I was able to go to a couple of the calls, and I know that some of the design changed a little bit when you moved the, the community room out to the front and a little bit of the shape, and, and I thought that that was really great input, and it, you know, sometimes people think these things were already predetermined, and I know that with the schools, especially Florence and her husband, Mr. Sullivan, that came to every single one of those, those meetings, and they had a lot of input. And, you know, there were things that were changed because of that public input. So, you know, if people are watching, things are changing as we go and learn and move based on, you know, every, every piece of this. So there, the public input is really, really important, and, you know, it really does get taken into consideration. I was wondering if Florence was coming because she was so, you know, she loved being at the, the school, and she said, "Am I going to be able to go to the, to the municipal ones, too?"
We haven't seen her lately, but that's a great
I'll have to invite her.
Yeah. That's a great point. The focus groups have been, I would say, beyond well-attended, so there's a great cross-section representation of Easton throughout, through both users and public. I think we've had between 15 and 25 people on those calls during this phase, and there's been a lot of input, and it's been well taken into account by the design team.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you both for being here tonight. We appreciate the update, and we're just excited to keep moving.
Thank you.
Thanks, Walter. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next is the review of the May 20th, 24, 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Draft.
Thank you, Dottie. So I believe all the articles in front of the board tonight, nine through 15, are all CPA articles. So we have invited the chair to come on in and give a presentation on where the Community Preservation Act Committee stands with their slate of investments for the community this spring.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Tom Broussard, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Appreciate being here with every, and seeing everyone again. Just, and by way, if it's okay, I'd love to do a quick overview on the CPA. Only one slide, I assure you, won't be long. But just in case, I know everybody in this room is familiar with it, but if there are folks, this popular show will be growing clearly, who want to understand what the CPA is, I think it's important to note that the CPA was actually something that the residents of Easton voted to support pretty much very quickly after the state promulgated the Community Preservation Act. So it's a state law, and communities and cities and towns can sign up, and we were amongst the first to do it in 2001. The act was actually put forth in 2000. So very quickly, the residents of Easton signed up to support it. And what it reflects is a commitment for a 3% surcharge onto our real estate taxes. It excludes the first, low income and the first $100,000. But the reason why I think the residents of Easton supported it then, and the reason why I think the residents support it now, is that we are charged, according to the state law, to focus on the preservation of open space and historic sites, to create a focus on affordable housing, and to develop outdoor recreational facilities. And I think all of us, obviously, being from Easton, value all of those three components very much. And because of that, if you participate with this, the state provides matching funds. So from an investment perspective, it's wise, for every dollar we raise since 2001, we have averaged getting 42 cents from the state matching funds. So it might not sound like a lot when it's a dollar and it's 42 cents, but believe it or not, through that time, we have received 25.3 million of our own surcharge real estate tax funding matched by $10.7 million from the state. So that's an awful lot of money to focus on projects that candidly, a lot of cities and towns might not be able to focus on from a capital perspective. I think I'm certainly preaching to the choir in this room, but for the residents' benefit, there are a lot of capital requirements. There's a very lengthy five-year plan that Easton maintains that we all wish we could get to, probably quicker and faster than we can. So, and they're all very important and critical. They deal with things like safety or with much-needed capital projects, like water safety and items like that. Whereas the CPA specifically focuses and mandates that we focus on those open spaces, the historic preservation, and affordable housing. Those might be three underserved investment opportunities if we didn't have this. So it's a pretty neat committee to be a part of. Give credit to the team. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you in case I forgot, but there's a tremendous amount of town staff engagement, so I just want to say thank you to Stephanie Danielson, Wayne, Wendy. Invariably, we call the DPW to ask for their help, for their advice, for their guidance, for their assistance in implementation. We are, we are constantly working with town resources, so appreciate everything that they do. A huge thank you to the fellow CPC committee members, John's here, and all the folks that dedicate their time for this. So it's a pretty lengthy process. It starts in June when we ask for letters of interest, so June 26 is this year's, and it rolls right through to town meeting. So we actually, at one of our last meetings, had one item that came up we were able to take advantage of. So it's a lengthy effort that people contribute their time, incredibly grateful. And then lastly, to you folks and the various boards and committees that support us, so if you think about it, we deal with recreation items, we deal with the Recreation Committee therefore, and it's just been an incredible partnership. We try to act collaboratively, and we receive that back from those boards and committees, and I think that the residents of Easton benefit from that collaboration.
I'd also like to give a shout-out to our legislators because they support, you know, the amounts that, that we get each year in the budget.
Good call.
And they, you know, for a couple of years there, we were getting supplemental, additional funds into that, so.
It's a great call.
That's always good.
Yeah, good call. So that's the opening. If we want, we can go through each of the articles.
Sure. Do, when Tom presents these, do we want to take a vote now to include and recommend?
I believe Tom and Wendy, these are all in final form and can be included and recommended if a board wishes.
Yep.
Yes, great.
Okay. So the first one is Article 9, the, sorry, yeah, Article 9 Report, no, Article 10.
No, Article 9.
Article 9, I'm right. Okay. Well, because it's, it's nine on the agenda in Article 9, I was just getting a little bit dizzy here. Article 9, Report in Fiscal Year 2025 Budget of the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes. So this, to me, as a finance person, has always been one of the most misleading components in terms of articulating the way our funds come through us and get dispersed. And so what I mean by that is while this article reflects $114,500 of administrative expenses and $600,818 of appropriations, it just doesn't reflect the rest of the warrant articles where the appropriation funded those. So for revenue this year, the CPC is projecting 2.29 million. That isn't reflected here because that appropriation will happen on the next warrant articles to come. What this represents is really, so on the administrative expense side, the CPA caps are administrative class at 5%. So if we are projecting 2.29 million, that's 5% of it. It reflects us covering half of a salary so we can help get support, and it also covers us to do some very minor efforts on our own. So for example, if we are approached with an application, we have our own question, and we want to get a consultant outside, feedback, we have some funding to do that without having to go and get appropriations. So pretty mild. The debt service, $600,818. And if I seem knowledgeable about these numbers, you can thank Wendy. So Wendy, thank you for all the schedules that you prepared. But really, it's six items that comprise it. Dean Street, which matures in FY '26, is 106 grand. Chestnut Street matures in FY '33, is 149 grand. The Guild Property matures in FY '35, is 179 grand. Then the Town Hall Exterior 1 is FY '37 maturation at 68 grand. The Town Hall Exterior 2 maturation of FY '43 is 45 grand. And the RO Playground, it's ban interest, which is 54 grand. So we haven't fully brought that into debt yet on that one.
Fiscal year 43.
Right? I know. Look, fanning ahead.
It'll be here fast.
I know.
I hope not. Going into 25, that feels weird.
The only thing I will say is that we do carefully and thoughtfully manage our balance sheet, so we have a very healthy reserve level. And we also manage debt as a factor of that as well. So you'll notice last year, for example, we incurred, are looking to incur debt for the playgrounds, and as I mentioned, we have something rolling off in FY '26, which is Dean Street. So we try to maintain a thoughtful level of leveraging of debt. It's obviously getting more expensive, so we're very cautious about that. But again, appreciative of all the efforts from those that came before me, building up a nice, healthy balance sheet so we can still do some very meaningful projects.
Okay. So just before you get on to the next one, is there any questions on Article 9?
No.
So can I get a motion to include and recommend?
I move to include and recommend Article 9.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes?
Lamb, yes.
Bulgenetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
Okay, great. Moving on to Article 10. This is Funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fiscal Year 2025 Program.
It is. You'll notice that the amount is $229,000. You'll reference that the revenues that are expected are 2.29 million, so it is a straight 10%. It's consistent with practices, and what we are doing is hitting our state mandated requirement for our three buckets, so affordable housing being one of them, and we have to allocate 10% of our expected revenues. You'll often hear at subsequent meetings, if we receive more monies than we thought, we give them 10% of those additional monies, and that's just because it's required by statute. The Affordable Housing is doing some incredible things. If you haven't looked at their five-year plan, I ask you to do so. And they just are beginning the construction with the Habitat for Humanity on Paquana Kit, which is very exciting. Several people in town have already volunteered. So if you have some time, please feel free to do it. You'll be able to see all of your efforts live when you drive by it on a regular basis. And it's pretty neat to see us being able to add some affordable housing stock.
Excellent. All right. Any questions on Article 10? All right, Craig?
I move to include and recommend and include Article 10.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes?
Lamb, yes.
Bulgenetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
All right, moving on to Article 11. CPA Funding for the Community Garden Improvements.
So this is, again, I think this is maybe one of my favorites in all of my years, and I know that sounds odd. The requested amount of support is $4,882. What makes it one of my favorite items is that it really represents grassroots of what the CPC can do to help impact some very important assets to the town of Easton. In this case, this is funding to add fencing, support the infrastructure, rebuilding compost bins at the 25 Space Community Garden at the Johnny Grant Management Area, Wheaton Farm Garden, at the Johnny Grant Management Area, Wheaton Farm at Bay Road. So I happen to know friends who use this. Obviously, I think everybody here knows Matt Solner, and credit to them for bringing this application before us. But this is a case where very small dollars can impact a group of people. And I think, as we've all talked about, open space and farming is so important to the residents of Easton, that these are some of the fun ones, because you should see the enthusiasm and the excitement. And for those that don't recall, this was a former Eagle Scout project. So it's just really great to reinvest in those pearls of what I think Easton really, is important to Easton.
After I was first elected, the next weekend was the ribbon cutting on this, and I was the only select person that could go. It was my debut, my first ribbon that I ever cut.
Nice.
I didn't know what to do.
Nice.
But I will always have that timeframe in mind. And Lee Williams was so excited and happy about that project, so.
Good call.
Awesome. Any questions? All right, Craig?
Move to include and recommend Article 11.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
Moving on to Article 12, CPA Funding for the Conservation Property Signage.
So I think we've all seen the fantastic town signs. I know they were the buzz, and everybody loves seeing them when you come in and out of town, and orient us as we go through town. The Conservation Commission has come before us and requested $54,395 of funding, specifically to replace 14 new conservation property signage, various locations townwide. These are deteriorated signs. I have some very small pictures, but I think we've all seen them. They're the classic brown with the kind of white lettering. And they're moving to the new current format that they're looking for. So we've started a trend. But I think it's great, because I think anytime when you can bring something that already existed a little bit more to people's awareness with a new sign, maybe it'll prompt them to appreciate all of the resources that we do have from an open space perspective. And then credit to the applicant, they're also purchasing three of their own signs. And there were several that were in good condition. In case anybody was concerned we would be replacing signs that were just replaced, that's not the intent. But once they do deteriorate, we would be looking to make them consistent.
Great. Any questions, comments?
I'll just admit, as much as I love the original wooden signs, they're tough to see. And you just, it is easy to drive by and not recognize it, where these other ones just pop, they just stand out.
Yeah.
Are we gonna lose the story, though, about the imps?
I was just thinking about that.
That's like famous, so.
Fair.
Can we request that one's day?
That makes like waves on social media, like outside of Easton. So, seriously, like it's like kind of a landmark in itself.
I think it's fair that we could say we could give the applicant advice to make sure that they try to preserve the story of the, of some of that behind it.
I think that'd be of value, because.
I think that's fair.
It's kind of a landmark in itself.
Wayne, is that fair feedback?
Okay.
Absolutely. Sawmill, right? I think that's the mill.
Yeah, that's the one, the.
Yes.
Quite the story.
True story, too.
All right, Craig?
Segue.
I move to include and recommend Article 12.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
My computer was listening to me, listening to us, and it started coming up with suggestions for children's folklore and stuff like this. All right, we are on to Article 13, CPA Funding for Keach Field Fencing.
Tied for one of my favorite items that have been put forth. So this was actually from a resident of town, involved in the Easton Girl Softball League, came to us. And I have participated in the league as well, so full disclosure. And the balls will just go out into poison ivy woods, all that. So really just got to talking about the fact that there is funding available for that, if residents want to get together and put together an application. And a gentleman did. So this application looks to put fencing down the first base side of the first field as you get there, down the third base side, and first base side of the other field as you get there. And really, what it just does, it improves the playing experience, and it makes it easier and safer. There'll be yellow plastic over the top of the fence, so when people jump on it to catch that foul ball and make the giant play, they won't get hurt. But this is something that, again, we're working with DPW, working with Joe Pitti from REC, to make sure that we put it in in the appropriate places, that we don't disrupt anything, that it enhances and doesn't take away from any usage of the fan, of the field.
Excellent. Any comments, questions?
Just as a baseball coach who has chased many balls where I did not want to go, and when I wasn't at Moish Park, and come out with poison ivy or anything else, I appreciate this.
Fair, fair.
Not just balls, the children you chase after, that chase after the balls.
Right?
Yes.
Well said.
All right, Craig?
I move to include and recommend Article 13.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
All right. Article 14, CPA Funding for Swift's Park Construction.
Awesome. So certainly, the, one of the larger ones for us, and certainly this year, it's the larger spend. I also think it's one of the bigger opportunities for us, from a CPC perspective, from a town perspective, candidly. I think we all know here the amount of effort and investment of time that we have all put into the 106 corridor, whether it was putting in the sewerage, whether it was having the thoughtfulness to plan ahead, whether it was the densely packed neighborhood, the zoning, Target and Avalon, and we all know the benefits that that has done for us. Thinking holistically for those projects, I'm not sure residents appreciate that those are years, if not decade, with a possible decades of planning that goes into that. I think this project represents another step along that journey. And I think it requires us to have thoughtfulness of vision and purpose. And I think we all appreciate that. As I mentioned, we've been working in this corridor for a period of time. But Swift's Park, to me, I think could be an incredible anchor to this entire corridor that connects all the way from Target all the way up to Five Corners. And if you envision the longer-term plans of widening that road, of having bike paths, of having sidewalks, of having people really be able to enjoy all of the benefits, whether it's the recreation that's right up the road at Old Pond and New Pond, and the trails that are around it. Everybody sees the fishing that's up there. And if you have a walkable district, and you are able to support all of the businesses that are along that corridor as well, obviously, right across from this, and I know I'm not doing the presentation that John had any justice, which is why they're watching, John's watching me intently. But I do think if you can have that vision, then this becomes another step in that journey, if that makes sense. Right across the road, there'll be a light put in, the development right there at the corner of Paquana Kit will be, is in process now. There'll be families, there'll be people, there'll be folks to enjoy this. And I think this is just another realization of the picture we've all been painting for a long time as a community of what we want this area to look like.
Well, I think as far back as when we had the first charrette, imagining, to reimagine that whole area, what that could look like. If you have that roadway from Target to Shaw's, and there's nothing to do to stop at along the way to keep you moving.
Right.
People are not going to walk. So, you know, they might walk up to the water features and walk back, or drive to the water features. But this, you know, these stops along the way are really important to getting people to do that kind of movement.
Right.
And that's the type of investment that housing brings, is to bring the amenities to go with the housing, because the people in those neighborhoods, they will enjoy that. You know, you see the little pocket parks and things that we have in the northeastern part that were near housing developments. So I think it's really, it's great, it's great for the southeastern part of the town to have something that's going to be that beautiful and commemorative.
Well said. If, folks haven't seen it, right across the street from this, there was last year's article on the preservation of the historic fence. If you haven't seen it, and I'll be the first one, honestly, when folks raised about preserving a fence, I wasn't sure I understood it. I can tell you I didn't understand it. And then I actually went and saw it. I don't live too far from there. And I had gone by it many years. But that is absolutely a one, one, you know, in the whole world, type of architecture. It is so beautiful, it's been refinished, it's been installed. And I just give credit to the CPC. There are people that care about those things. There are people that are passionate about historical preservation, for raising their hand and articulating why this was important. But if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go. Don't drive by it, get out and walk by it, and look at the detail. It was restored by a local firm, De Angelis. So just incredible workmanship that I cannot give words to do it any justice. But it's those things, and I'm hopeful that there'll be signage there. There might not be an imp discussion, but at the least, it'll be why Furnace Village is so important to the history of Easton. This park can help talk about that. And certainly, what the park represents in terms of acknowledging first responders, there's just an incredibly good story and impactful story that goes with this. I think, to your point, Dottie, investment in this area can only but pay spades, especially with the housing that's coming onboard and the longer-term vision. So.
Excellent.
We do have letters of support, apologies. So the Historical Commission has voted unanimously to support. We do have support as well from the Furnace Village Neighboring Collective. I see Dale Carrister is here, he's important there. So we have a letter of support from that. And I believe we have another letter of support, I'm not doing it justice. Council on Agents?
Yes.
Yes. So there's just a tremendous amount of broad support. The Furnace Village Neighboring has over, close to 200 people-ish, give or take. So there's clearly a desire to see investment in this part of town. I think there's an appreciation for the long-term vision that's being realized in this part of town. And I think this project is going to fit right into what we're trying to accomplish.
Excellent. Any questions, comments?
Just, look, we stand on the shoulders of giants, right? So I've come in, in the last three years, been able to help see a lot of these projects that were begun long before, you know, I had any involvement. So I'm reaping the benefit of a lot of the hard work. And Tom sat here before me, and on this board. And Dale, thank you, I read your letter. So Ed, John, I thank all of you, not only the first responders that we paid tribute to, but also those whose lives were lost to COVID. And I know we've got folks with family members here that's the case. So, including the, you know, flu of 1918, right? So this is a really big deal. It ties all that together. And that area of town has, as a community, come together and done things that are unbelievable. So, at cost to themselves, you know, to themselves as well, to better our entire community. So thank you.
Agreed.
Thanks, Jamie. Well said.
I think what you said earlier about pocket parks, and how they create a fabric, like they weave a continuity across the space, that, you know, people sometimes hear park, and they think, oh, big park. But it's really those small parks that are intentionally placed and drive connection that really actually create that woven fabric that make community feel real. And I mean, having small kids walking around, and they were little now, they're getting bigger. But when we leave to walk around northeast when they're little, we'd stop at those parks all the time, read the signs, they'd ask questions. So I mean, you know, I just, I think it's a really exciting opportunity for that area of town. And if folks are thinking in a bubble about just this park, without thinking about the bigger picture, and what this starts to mean, like, just kind of let that settle in, and then think bigger picture long-term. Because I think this is just the start of great things from down there, in terms of starting to weave that. And your letter was wonderful, Dale, so.
Everybody has captured everything that I'm going to say, so, thank you.
I was going to say a whole bunch of stuff, and they just all stole it from me, you know? But I do want to acknowledge the work that the committee has done, from the very beginning, and Ed, and John, and Dale. The incredible work to bring it into a budget that was able to be presented and accepted by the CPC. And I, as a member of the committee, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys. And thank you very much for all the work that you've done.
Well said.
So I'll move to include and recommend the article number 14.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
Excellent. And the last but not least, Article 15, CPA Funding for Historical Society Fire Suppression.
Yes. So the total amount being asked is $325,000. And as with the Swift's Park, we are always in the CPC appreciative. We like to call it skin in the game. So the actual total cost of the project's $365,000, but the Historical Commission Committee is going to put in $40,000 of their own. And so we always appreciate that when partners come to us. And they're also financially invested in it as well. Don't have to be, but it's appreciated. We had previously the CPC-supported plans, funding for this, $15,000 for those plans. This is the implementation and execution of those plans. The one thing I would point out as well, so this was one of the later submissions, we generally try to follow a calendar. It's important. And if you do so, then it affords you latitude. So this did come up a little bit on the latter end. And the reason why we appreciated the application was we have to commit 10% of our revenues towards the historical preservation. And so this was an opportunity for us to allocate those funds, rather than putting them in just a reserve. We didn't happen to have another project that satisfied the historical allocation. So we're appreciative of the applicant for coming forward. We think this is great to help protect and preserve an asset from a historical perspective we all appreciate and value. And so that's the total amount, 325.
Excellent. Any comments, questions? All right.
I move to include and recommend Article 15.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
Excellent.
Sweet. If I could just say one last thing, since I have you all and you can't take me out too easily. I do just want to point out something that doesn't show up, quote-unquote, in the scorebook, if you will. But we recently received a payment, and it was from the shovel shop. And the amount was $852,000. And I think, as everybody knows, many, many years ago, credit to standing on the shoulders of giants. But there was a lot of forethought and foresight in helping support the shovel shop development. And probably not everybody knows, but the CPC played a role by loaning $4.5 million worth of that. And we actually get paid back interest, it's 3% interest. So by today's standards, relatively low, but that's okay. We also get the principal back in full by 2031. So the way it works is the shovel shops, as long as they are cash flow positive, I'm going to get this wrong, then they pay back on interest. And so far, to date, they've made $1.5 million worth of interest payments to the CPC. So we're generating revenue, and they've paid back $670,000 worth of principal. So I only bring that up simply because sometimes it takes foresight, it takes being able to think about projects like Swift Park, to be that far ahead. That was many years ago that we did the shovel shop project. And we're still getting back the residual. And I think we all would say that that project has helped us spur a lot of activity in that area of our town, much to the better. So I just thought I'd raise that as well.
I appreciate you saying that, because I remember at the time, that was actually before I started on the board, just before, a lot of people said, oh, you'll never get your money back. You know, that's never going to happen. And so it did happen. And it's happening exactly the way it was planned. And I think we kind of forget it as we're going through the day-to-day motions of things. The TIF is also going to be expiring.
That's right, this year.
This year?
Yes.
Which means, you know.
New growth that we very desperately need.
Right.
Much new growth throughout Easton, which has been catalyzed by sewer, affordable housing, and CPA funds that have been strategically invested for 15 years. I'd just like to make a point, that that single interest payment is almost in excess of the entire year's slate of CPA projects.
Right.
So.
Yeah. And if people want to see, if they want to remember what the investments were, you can go onto the Community Preservation website and look for Easton, and it will give you a listing of all of them. And if you think of some of the things that we've done, what we would have done, what would it have looked like if we hadn't done the gardens behind the library, you know, like some really, we kind of live with this, like this luxury around us, and don't really think about it a lot. But if you look at that list, and you think about what Easton would look like if we didn't have each of those, I think it's really eye-opening.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I would just have pulled last year's projects, and I was just thinking about just a couple of them that come to mind, but the tennis courts, the basketball courts, the pickleball courts by the high school, you know, just the playground. I don't know if you've been able to go over to RO, but the North Playground is largely complete, South is going to be beginning. So the fence, I've already referenced. There's just a tremendous amount of projects that have come through the years, that I think really play a role in creating what Easton experience is for residents, so.
Sean?
Hey, John, I just wanted to get quick on that. I can't say that Tom articulated that so well. Thank you, and thank you for what you're doing.
Cheers.
Getting back to, you know, the shovel shops, and it was not an easy task for a lot of people in the community. It was difficult. But the thing that I, it sticks in my head is the harmony between the community, the business, our town government worked so well. And you look at what it has done to our community in downtown Easton. I mean, it was just, everybody was in harmony once we got through all the bumps. And what we have now down there, what could have been there, and what we have there, is pull that whole downtown together. So well done on everybody's count.
And it is scary to make those decisions and make those votes, particularly if there's people that don't agree with you, and you're feeling pressure, but you know it's the right thing to do. And like you said, Jamie, you know, we're still realizing a And like you said, Jamie, you know, we're still realizing a lot of the decisions that were made before our time. And it's great to go to the ribbon cuttings and be there when it all worked out, and when you came in under budget and ahead of schedule. But when you had to vote to make those decisions, you know, they're big votes.
That we have, and I think, I don't think I know the select board has that vision. And, you know, no disrespect to anybody else in the community, but a lot of people can't see beyond that. So, you need certain people to see it. You all see it, and that's why this town is, we're proud to be living in.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for being here tonight, Tom. Good to see you.
Tom, it's a pleasure to see you.
Always good to see you, sir.
All right, we are up to the review of the fiscal 2024 pavement management completed repairs. This is one of my favorite presentations of the year, by the way.
I'll try to not disappoint.
No pressure.
Okay. Should be good. Good evening. One second, just pulling this up. All right. Evening.
It's not showing.
Oh, yeah. Do we need to?
Do I need to?
Get it in there?
Yeah. Might be on extend rather than duplicate. Just double one.
Look at this guy. Oh, thank you. Yeah, let's take a revert back, huh?
Yeah, I was gonna say the other presentation. You're good.
Okay. Sorry about that.
There we go.
Make this bigger for everyone. All right. Good evening. Dave Field, Director of Public Works, gonna give a brief update on our road program, talk about what we did last year, about pavement management in general, really briefly, and review our three-year plan going forward, and then talk about some other road projects we have coming up. And if you have any questions, please stop me anytime. So, pavement management, it's doing the right thing at the right time, in the right place, and the right way. We use a software program to help synthesize all the items we have, road surface ratings. We know the condition of every road in town. We know the traffic volumes roughly on every road in town. We know what construction methods are needed for each road, and we know what our budget is, and we use a software product to really help us analyze that and come up with a program. So, looking at last year's roads, the FY24 roads, we completed, a little further down, just about, just under $900,000 worth of roads. We did mill-samine overlay on Hilltop Lane, Meadow Brook, Pine Brook, and Tyson Road. And mill-samine overlay is a process where we grind off the surface layer of asphalt. We put a stress-absorbing membrane interlayer, rolls off the tongue. It's rubber chip, it's an asphalt coat of stone in a rubberized membrane, and that helps absorb any stresses that the bottom layers have, and then we overlay that with a hot-mix asphalt. So, that's a very successful repair for us. We've been doing that for several years with good luck. In that, we do that instead of a full reclamation on some roads, which would be much more expensive. So, we've had good luck with that. We did preventative maintenance on Canton, Summer, and Union Streets, and that is our ultra-thin bonded overlay. It's a very thin layer of asphalt embedded in emulsion. And then we did routine maintenance, which is crack sealing. We did a lot of that last year on about 140,000 linear feet of roadway. And then we had some non-pavement management roads, which we're not including in the cost, but we're showing on the map. The Depot Street project was completed, so we've updated that in our system. So, overall, just under $900,000 of spending. And just a quick look back, the last 12 years, we've done just under $11 million worth of paving. Our road service rating is now a 75. Last year, at this time, it was a 71. This is primarily due to the resurvey. So, we resurvey every five to six years to make sure we're being accurate and our roads are up to date. The previous RSR of 71 was a computerized, computer-generated score, which deteriorated our roadway to a 71. Now, we know it's actually at a 75. That's in part due to like roads like Depot Street, which was $12 million funded by the state. And we have a current backlog of $22 million worth of roadway repairs that are needed to bring everything up to mint condition. And that's a little higher than last year. Last year, I think we were at 18 and a half or 19 million.
I was gonna say that those prices keep escalating.
Yeah, and some of that is related to resurvey, and some of it's just escalation. I'll go through that a little later, Dottie. So, the proposed repairs for FY25, we're proposing $1.4 million worth of repairs, doing mill and overlay on Foundry Street, and we'll zoom into that. The section between Highland and the town line in Norton, gonna do a mill and overlay on Norton Avenue. And this is the area that was affected by the water main installation recently. And then we're gonna do some of the more of that mill-samine overlay on Baltic Avenue, on Gilmore Road, a portion of Gilmore. We did some mill-samine overlay on that several years ago on a different portion. We're gonna do the rest of it now. And we broke that up because the conditions were different, and it was a huge number for that. So, Gilmore Road itself is 170,000 now, and the other section was a little less that, but still, it's a big number for one road. Doing Hillington Drive and Wenlock. And we'll also be doing some drainage work out there, too. We get some drainage issues, so that's outside of the pavement management scope, but it'd still be done as part of the process. Then we're proposing reclamation on Beechtree Lane, and if you remember this from last year, you're not wrong, we did not get to it last year. So, Beechtree and Cedar, both, we couldn't get them done last year. We had trouble getting the reclamation contractor to schedule. We finally got him scheduled in September, but we had had a lot of rain in that time, and then we couldn't get the paving contractor to come in because of their backlog. So, we've pushed that into this year. So, Beechtree and Cedar Drive will be done this year with funds from last year, and we've added Old Foundry Street. So, we're kind of doing that whole triangle of Foundry Street, Norton, and Old Foundry. Any questions on, actually, I'll zoom out again for everyone just to see. That's our proposed plan for this year, and we're gonna be getting going probably sooner or later, hopefully, early April, we'll be getting some test strips done and some reclamation done on some of those roads.
Great.
And then, looking forward, you know, we're not gonna be doing them now, but we always try to come up with a three-year plan, and that's primarily for planning purposes and for utility coordination. We've already gotten comments back from Eversource about where they're gonna be doing work, and so, we try to get this plan out in, you know, in a three-year plan. And, you know, there are tweaks that'll be needed probably if we get more money. So, I should have said that on our previous, on this coming year, we're at $1.4 million. Some of that is brought over from last year, but another is a $376,000 infusion from the Fair Share Act, which the state was given $100 million to distribute through a Chapter 90 formula. So, we received an additional $375,000 we weren't planning on. So, that's why we're doing the $1.4 million this coming year. So, it's no guarantee we'll get that in the future, but we're using just our Chapter 90 allowance of about $700,000 in both '26 and '27. Hopefully, we get more, but you never know.
So, Eversource has to recommit to reinstalling gas lines? And when they do that, they try to work with the town so that you do it at the same time?
Yeah, or they're not gonna be going on, if they have a project to do, they'll try to get ahead of us. So, it's done before we need to get there. And that actually came up on Main Street, which you'll see in the '27, they have a bare steel gas main that has to be replaced. So, they're gonna try to accelerate that, either do it this year or next year, prior to us getting out there and paving that road. So, it's just a coordination that's, it's good practice. We coordinate internally because we are the water division also. So, some of the work that we're gonna be doing in '26 is directly related to our water mains, which we're gonna be doing. That's why some of these repairs get pushed to '26.
It's really hard to do, too. I went to a presentation on that for some reason, and they were talking about, like, because they have to do that across the whole region, and they're trying to coordinate with all these towns. So, I remember at the time, learning that Easton was like really on top of that, and, you know, you obviously don't wanna pave a street and then have them dig it up the next year.
Yeah, it's the last thing you want, so. So, for '26, we're proposing routine maintenance, which is crack sealing, about $104,000 on various roads, those are shown in blue. The ultra-thin bonded overlay, we're proposing to do a section of Bay Road between Highland and Sawmill, Forest Edge Road, Calvin Road, Kenneth and Marshall, all in the same subdivision, and then a section of Union Street. We held off on this section because it was a planned development that the status, we're still not exactly sure of, but we did the rest of Union Street last year. We're pushing this off to give that development chance to get their utilities in before we could do any paving. So, again, that advanced coordination. And then, we're doing reclamation on Barrow Street, Day, Oakland, and Bridge, sorry. And those are ones where we're gonna be going in with water main work. We originally planned on doing this, that work the previous year, but price of pipe went up and availability of pipe went crazy. So, now, we've pushed that. We're gonna be constructing that water main this year, and we'll be paving the roads the following year. So, that is our '26 plan.
So, I mean, just on Oakland, Day, you're looking at like totally new roads for all-around Froleyham Park and Froleyham Hall.
Yep, yep. Yeah, those will be completely, they're small roads, they'll be, they're pretty narrow. We're gonna be doing water main work, so we're gonna just reclaim the whole road. We try not to do that where we can, but those ones are absolutely necessary, so.
That'll be a great improvement.
And then, proposed repairs for '27, again, around $700,000, using strictly our Chapter 90 money. We'll be doing Hayward Street as a mill-samine overlay, and Park Street as mill-samine overlay, and then mill and overlay on Chestnut Street. That's near Keach Field, out to Piquanicket, Depot Street, the section that, kind of the oldest section now on Depot Street, that was done as a TIP project in the early 2000s, in-house TIP project. So, this is gonna go from the end of where the current project just ended, down to Five Corners, and then Main Street. It'll be done from Washington Street to the Brockton Town Line.
Depot and Main, this is also coinciding with the building project.
Yes, they came up earlier, but we pushed them, so we can get utilities in, things like that, prior to that.
So, we'll need sewer extensions, and we'll also end up with all the utilities you need underground of those new buildings and new roads.
Yep, so those do need to be done, they're high, they're very high priority ones, and we've pushed them off to '27 for that reason, to make, you know, allowances for all those utility connections. So, that is our '27 plan, and I can show you overall. That's the three-year plan of $2.8 million worth of spending. Any questions on the proposed plan, or any reasons or questions about it?
We were, we were at 18 and a half last year. Right now, we're at 22. Realistically, three years from now, we spent $3 million, and we're gonna be 26. You know, do we write with escalation?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Yes, costs are going up. I think I had a slide on it last year, I've taken out this year, but we've lost 46% of the value of our money. Chapter 90 has, statewide, has historically been about 200 million a year, divided by all the cities and towns. It's still that way. You know, we did get the fair share, fair share money, which is $100 million infused this year, so that's great. But in general, it's not enough to keep up with what we need. So, this is another way to look at it, the mile-year analysis. And so, you probably saw this last year, so it's just been updated for this year. But every year, a mile-year analysis basically says that we have 117 miles of road. Every year, that 117 miles gets one year older. So, we lost 117 mile-years of life from our roadways and network. Ideally, you'd be able to put back in at least 117 years, mile-years of life, back into your system by doing repairs. So, if we reclaim one mile of road, that adds 20 years of life to your system. If you crack seal that road, it adds two years of life. So, they all have a different, you know, the repairs all have a different value of what it adds, but basically, it's just looking at a plus-minus on where you stand. So, you can see in FY24, we were able to add 77 mile-years to our system, but we still lost 39 overall, because everything got a year older. So, that just shows us that in every year, this number changes, the cost per mile for the repairs change based on the type of repairs we do. We tend to lump those together. So, we had a crack sealing, we did a lot of crack sealing last year, so our cost was low on a per-mile basis. But you can see it overall, when you average it over the last nine years, we're averaging $16,000 a mile, and that comes out to $1.9 million. So, that's really where we should be for our funding level. We're not there. We're, this year will be 1.4. Going forward, obviously, we're gonna be dependent on future appropriations of Chapter 90, things like that, but I'm just letting you know that that's where we stand, and this is where we should be aiming to be. We're not quite there. But we're not in dire streets, I think we're doing a good job with our network. The roads that are falling behind are the subdivision roadways. So, those usually have less of an impact, it has an impact directly to the people that live in that subdivision, but generally, once people pull out of their roadway, onto a secondary or arterial road, they're in pretty good shape. So, we're doing okay, just, we could always be doing better, so.
I think that's, it's good timing that this is being presented tonight, when you're getting a budget update as well. This is something kind of perennially comes up, I know, with the board, and with the public, particularly when, you know, to Director Field's point, you talk about subdivision roads that have a huge impact, where people live on them, but have a very low total traffic volume, and we just simply do not have a recurring funding to get to every single road. And one of the main drivers there is that the program we rely on from the state has, with some exceptions, and we always very much appreciate those exceptions, like what we saw this year. And we can see as well, just by looking at the maintenance completed in '14 and planned in, sorry.
Got another one here, sorry.
'24 and planned in '25, what a difference it makes in how far we could get, getting deeper into some subdivisions and doing some of that work. Most years, it's level-funded, at the same amount that it's been funded since the early, the, what do we say, the early aughts, is that a thing?
Yeah.
The two, the early 2000s, right? And so, that, when that's level-funded every year, over time, you're losing purchasing power. And so, we've supplemented that locally where we can, through the local capital program, but we pulled back on that to maintain the town's debt posture and not issue too many bonds. And we, it also kind of proportionally increases the importance that we are able to write and win grants and do these large programs like Depot Street, where if our recurring funding capacity outside of those better years from the state is $700,000, it really puts into focus how important it is that we are doing the right things from a grant compliance standpoint, when you think about things like the MBTA zoning act, to stay compliant with the grants we rely on for engineering funds, so that we can get $12 million at a time for projects like Depot Street, which is more than we get in a decade, right? Or for 15 million, which we're in line for, for Foundry Street, provided we continue to win those grants, to stay in compliance of state laws, to be in standing for those grants, because those make a big difference as far as adding life, road mile life, to our system that we just cannot do with our local funds, and that the state's recurring program funds less and less and less of every single year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, Connor kind of spoiled the rest of my presentation, but that's all right. So, just on this one, this is just a graphical version of that. The blue lines are what our actual funding has been, and the red's what we're projecting for our three-year plan. Green is where we should be based on a mile-year analysis, so you can see there's a pretty big gap in there. But as Connor mentioned, we're lucky to have TIP projects. I think Connor had this advance copy, but Depot Street's done, so that was a $12 million project. Went very well, I think most people are very happy. We've dealt with all the punchless items and little issues here and there, but in general, I think it's a huge improvement for the town. Moving forward, we'll have Elm Street. So, this is another project where we started, we started to design this ourselves because it wasn't going anywhere. So, we jumped in, this is a state road, and we jumped in and started the design process using some mitigation funds and some Chapter 90 funds. Eventually, we got the state to actually take over the design of this, because we kind of pushed back a little bit, because this involves corridor work on Washington Street as well, that's gonna actually connect to where Union Street project stopped. And Mast UT actually took it over for us and are paying for the design. So, our designer, Beta, who we hired and started this process, is now being paid by the state. This is gonna be bid this federal fiscal year, so hopefully- This is going to be bid this federal fiscal year, so hopefully in October this year, October of '24, Calia '24, this will be out to bid and this, this project will probably be a two- to three-year project to get this done. And again, this is a $7 million project that's being done. Most of it's on state road, so it doesn't help us Chapter 90-wise, like as far as our road miles, our RSRs, but it's a very important project for the safety, so another, another tip project.
Just to, to be clear, this is going to straighten out Elmen-Washington, signalize it, pedestrian crossings there and connect bike lane sidewalks all the way up 138 to Union Street and they're going to run the sidewalk down to Langwater Farm as well.
Correct.
So that's going to be huge.
And that mitigation for the design on that, that came from the housing on Washington Street.
Correct.
So, you know, I just think it's worth calling out, when we do housing, they're connected to other economic or infrastructure drivers. So, you know, back when we were talking about the foresight to see how things were, you know, several years back now, when they put in that housing, you know, to have the foresight to say, let's take a little, you know, work with them to get a little bit of money towards that intersection, really smart way to look at those kind of arrangements.
Yeah, and that was the seed money that basically got us to be able to hire a designer, go through conceptual and come up with a project and then start down this road. So without that, we'd probably still be here waiting for a project to happen, so. So Elm Street is again up for this year to be bid, which is great news. Then moving on to Foundry Street, we're not quite as far in the process with Foundry Street, but we're using, cobbling together lots of different pools of money to get this designed. We got a community choice grant of $225,000, which we've already expended to start the process, and this is Foundry Street, this is a close-up of the plan, but basically from Robert Drive to Bay Road, include widening, signalization and replacement of three stone culverts. Those are very expensive. We've also received a $250,000 MassWorks grant for the design and we are using $339,000 in mitigation funds to help with the design. And this is estimated to be a $15 million project right now. So this is yet to be programmed. I can't guarantee when this will happen, but we've had good luck working with OCPC. We're active in OCPC and I think we've landed a lot of projects above our, you know, what the region has. So we're optimistic that this will get programmed, but just, you know, in hindsight, looking back at Depot Street that started around 2012, was finished in 2023. So, you know, we're looking at a long project, but you have to start somewhere and we're well underway here.
I've been told Easton can't get all the money.
Although we'll try.
We'll try. And not to belabor the point, but if you go back to that number that Dave gave, about 700,000 of recurring revenue from the state for our road program annually, there's more than, if my math serves me correctly, $700,000 of grants and mitigation associated with housing and economic development grants that we will not be entitled to if we do not comply with MBTA zoning. And so that's more than a year's worth of state road money that we typically receive coming from grants, coming from developer mitigation to serve as seed money for over 15 million that again will not be paid out of local capital dollars down the road for transformative roadway projects that we need.
And then the last one I have is an update on a new project that's just starting, the Washington Street Turnpike and Purchase Street Tip Project. The MastDOT has initiated a project to improve these intersections. Only one of these is town-owned, it's Turnpike and Purchase. We've gone and taken the interim step of a four-way stop sign there with, with some good initial feedback. It looks like we've cut accident rate down by half by implementing that four-way stop. So that's good news, but we still have high accidents, high crash rate in this whole corridor and the, you know, Purchase and Washington Street is a real problem. So MastDOT has initiated a project here. We've actually just held a scoping session in January. They've hired niche engineering to start the design process. Don't know what the design's going to, what's going to come out of that design. We're very early in the process, but whether it's signalization, roundabouts, they're looking at every, everything's on the table and to be examined to try to make some improvements here. So this is positive news, it's something we've been asking for with MastDOT for a while and they've, they've really stepped up and have started this without really having to be asked much more. We brought it to them as a problem and they, they've really jumped on it. So hopefully we'll have news on this, we'll have, there'll be public hearings for the design, there'll be charrettes, things like that where, you know, we can look at what their potential solutions are and look at, you know, trying to get the, a tip project in to make those happen, but it's well underway now, so.
Isn't MastDOT also looking at the, at like in the Quee City area, a road diet?
Yeah, so they're looking at a road diet and a, you know, paving program as well for the rest of 138. So yeah, that's all stuff that's on the table, but I'm not including that here because that's kind of more in their, in their court. But yeah, a road diet's definitely being looked at. Those days of having two lanes in each direction may not really be necessary, so they're looking at options they have.
I just, I feel like MastDOT either I'm just aware of it more or it feels like they're a lot more active in our projects lately.
Yeah, no, we've had, we've had good luck working with MastDOT. We attend the meetings and we, we put in the work and we, we have FaceTime with them, so I think all that helps, so.
And to be specific, you're putting the work on the engineering side, right? Which is something that was a priority for Public Works when Dave started, to make sure that we had engineers on staff here so that we can get some of this work moving, make sure we're positioning ourselves well to fight for those state and federal dollars and win. And that's what you were seeing.
But going to those transportation meetings with Old Colony Planning Council, when I used to go to them, you know, you and Greg or either or or both were on there and then there were 17 communities, there were not 17 communities worth of representation in there and you guys were always there. So it takes work to go to those things and not miss a meeting and it, that's part of why the relationship is so strong.
Yeah, it's, and OCPC is great to work with, so I've been in three different MPOs, Serpid, the Boston MPO and OCPC, and they are by far the easiest to work with. They, they just look at the communities that participate and they kind of like tee it up and say, hey, let's do your project, where conversely, in, in other places, you had to really lobby, you had to, you know, bring out everything, all the guns to try to get any project going because you had 101 communities in one MPO. So OCPC's been great, the staff's great and I can't say enough, good things about OCPCs.
Just another thing I want to flag is when you started working here, you brought a lot of technology with you and a lot of innovation. I just remember, I don't remember the deep, well, pavement management plans are something I never thought would roll off the tongue or I'd know anything about, but even just changing the kind of pavement and the temperature and being able to measure the performance of the pavement, to go back to the installers if it wasn't done right, which you have had to do before, those are things that were never measured or looked at, you know, I'm not blaming anybody before it, I'm just saying the technology has changed a lot since you've been there. And even looking at the cost per road mile, all of that data is so important and GIS, we didn't really have GIS back then either, so.
Yeah, it's crucial.
To be able to take care of everything and keep track of it all and water pipes and water mains and roadway all on the GIS, it's amazing.
We're working on it.
It's really great.
Yep. So, and that brings me to the end, unless you've got anything else I should talk about, Connor.
I think you have some good water projects going on.
Yes, we do, we do. So any other questions or I can help with? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to keep this running or are you going to shut up?
Yeah, we have some work.
Excellent.
All right, so your, the next thing is discussion and vote for DPW 2024-01 Altech Industries Forestry Grapple Truck.
Yes, thank you. So this is a contract for a new forestry grapple truck. This is a truck that's going to really improve worker safety. This was brought to me by my staff, the guys that work on the trees, they, they really identified this as a, as a piece of equipment that's going to really help them. It's basically a grapple that can go up and it has a SAR attached, so we can grab a tree, cut it and lower it to the ground in pieces. So it's not quite as like the center bogan we saw during some of those storms that, you know, that were brought out. Not quite as sophisticated as that, those are more a million-dollar machines. This is a machine that's very high-tech, it could be remotely operated through a joystick, so it really takes the, some of the hazards out of a very dangerous job. So it's a great thing to have and I'm really happy that we can, we can find a way to make this work. We had $275,000 was appropriated at town meeting, but the price of this has escalated so much, it's, we are actually getting one that's demo model. It was, they wanted 330,000 for it and we're going to get it for 310,000. We're going to lean on some of our equipment revolving fund where we, when we sell our equipment, we put in a revolving fund to be used for just like this, circumstances like this, where we can help to supplement an article. So I'm happy to say that we can sign this contract for 310,989 with Altech to get this piece of equipment and we should have it in pretty short order.
Okay, any comments, questions? You'll be able to put it in a new building pretty soon.
You got it.
All right, excellent. Craig?
Move to approve DPW 2024-01 Altech Industries Forestry Grapple Truck, what did you say, 310,000?
310,989.
310,989.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
ACS?
Lamb, yes.
Bolgenetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
Excellent. All right. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
So item 12 is a discussion, sorry, yeah, item 12 is a discussion and vote for adoption of Select Board New Policy Number 57, ambulance billing and collection policy.
So attached for our board's consideration, your packet is a proposed new policy from the Select Board's policy book, already pre-numbered from the finance section relating to ambulance billing and collection. It was drafted by Finance Director Nytingale and Chief Alexander and Collector Commissioner Hawks, formalizes billing and collection procedures for the town director and chief or head answer. Any questions or they have? There's also an explanatory memo from Wendy.
Good evening.
Hello.
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 You look so happy to be here.
Me? Oh, absolutely. I'm coming down. Absolutely.
So this, this is a best practice. We wanted to get this adopted. It will aid in our reconciliation process and also streamline the abatement process by creating a standardized hardship form and automating the removal of uncollectible accounts after the statutory period ends.
So it's really just codifying what we've pretty much kind of been doing all along?
That's correct.
Okay. Excellent.
That leaves no questions.
No questions.
All right.
So I move to adopt the new policy number 57, ambulance billing and collection policy.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
ACS?
Lamb, yes.
Bolgenetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
All right, that was an easy one.
Thank you.
There you go.
We don't have, do we have another? Oh, yes, the next one is another intermunicipal agreement between the town of Easton and the towns of Hanson and Duckbury for fire department apparatus maintenance.
So here I am again. The program continues to grow. So another two, two smaller communities, which is what we're targeting. We don't want to overload our mechanic and our, we have some supplemental internal mechanics on the fireside that help when necessary, but we're doing good, we're holding on and it's all planting the seed for what we're counting down to the new building. This is all what this is about. It's building up the program, it's financially supporting itself so we can have the reserves that we need to really have it take off in the new building and we're very excited about it. So it's, everything's on track and we're looking good.
And it's helping some smaller communities that wouldn't be able to take advantage of a program like this if, if it wasn't for Easton doing it, so.
I think it would be, it's fair to say that there's pretty much no more quick and thorough service that's fair. One thing I'll point out is for anybody who's had their vehicles fixed, one thing that a lot of places do is you go in and say, I need this done to your vehicle, and what they do is they quote you an hour. So if it's like, say you need your rear differential fixed, rear end of your vehicle, then the book says it's eight hours. You pay eight hours whether the mechanic does it in three or eight. That's just the rate. That's how they do it and that's what the industry is, it's not a knock on the industry, but that's how it operates. But what we do is we actually just charge by the hour. So we're not saying this job is going to be four hours and because our mechanic, Tim, is so great, he does it in one, we still charge that four. And I think there's a lot of savings there for other communities and we're still receiving the benefit from it as well. And I think they see it, which is why people want to keep signing. And the fact that basically their trucks get in the next day, short of an Easton vehicle being out of service, because we always take, and everybody knows that when they come into this program, we always take precedence first, our vehicles get repaired first, but pretty much they get in the next day and if the parts are available, they turn them around and it goes right back out and you just can't get that anywhere right now. So it's, it's spreading. I've heard rumors of even New Bedford EMS is interested and that's a big program.
That's a big one.
So that would be something we would talk about as we go into a bigger building, but I see a lot of potential here.
It's really great. I mean, it was a vision that I think it's.
Still developing.
It's much bigger than you, I think, is it much bigger than you were expecting in the beginning because it feels?
I think it, I had hopes of the building project passing because I think that was really the linchpin on what we could do. Without that, we would be kind of maxing out now and knowing what it is, we could still grow some knowing what the future holds and just kind of, you know, make Tim squeak a little bit with the building and trying to get it done with what he does, but he does a great job with it. But it, it took the, the dream, if you will, and turned into reality when the building project passed. And now we can, the sky's really the limit because the two bays we're going to have at the DPW building will allow theoretically, you can have four, full-size fire engines inside at any one time and you can get a lot of work done when you could do that.
That's great.
I just, I, I can't say enough and the lead times are unbelievable. Our, well, our economies of scale will improve as we're trying to get parts, right? Because I imagine that still, there's lead time on parts, right? And you mentioned, if they're available, you're pretty much next day right now.
Exactly.
Which is mind-boggling and then to be prepared for the new building and what, what we can do. I can't believe you've got towns, how come other towns like New Bedford, don't need to name a specific town, but aren't also looking at doing this?
So there's a bunch of models on how you take care of emergency vehicles, so they're just send it out, which I think is the most high cost, like that's the least efficient way to do it. But I, I think unless you have a mechanical background, sometimes that's your only option. Being an emergency vehicle technician myself, it gives me a different lens. It's kind of like being a paramedic as a chief. You can see how the operation works because you were a paramedic versus if you weren't a paramedic, it's a lot harder to understand. So seeing that, you kind of see where the efficiencies are and it's one of the things I quickly recognized when I came here, I'm like, this is, this is a problem. You know, you don't usually come into your boss within the first like four weeks of working here and be like, hey, midstream, we got to change right now. And that's what we did and thankful it was received well. And I think going forward, we can do that, but there are a couple of different models where, you know, there's the DPW model, which works in some communities and, you know, where DPW tries to maintain the emergency vehicles. But one of the things about the DPW model is the, the scale of what DPWs take on between their own vehicles and police vehicles and town vehicles. It's so hard to juggle because then when the fire department breaks, there's really no extra vehicles we can get into typically, or very few. So we have to all of a sudden cut the line and it's super challenging when, you know, the police department's counting on their cruiser or somebody else is counting on their car. So that model doesn't always work, but having, being able to have the facility for a fire maintenance is where the lynch, the real key is. If you have the facility, you can stand it up and most places don't have it.
Got it.
So those are the different models that you can do and we're, I think we're very fortunate that, you know, I could see this program, you know, we're saving now is what we're doing. We're saving our account. It was about $20,000 that we've accumulated after the costs of parts and things that we're, but we're putting everything we can into the account and not spending it because we want to save up, you know, I would like to see about $100,000 in that account because what happened is when we fully go into the new building, you're going to see a $10,000 part have to be ordered or overtime here. And if you have two or three departments needing a $10,000 part, we have to have the ability to contain that within the revolving fund because that can't go below zero. So we have to contain that, so we have to plan. And that's part of our strategic plan is to, between now and the time we move in, continue to build that account up the most that we can, to the highest level that we can, so when we go in day one, we can hit the ground running. We're ready, we're prepared, we're financially ready and we can take on pretty much anything that comes our way.
I don't know who hired this guy, but great job. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Appreciate the support. This couldn't happen without all of you.
I would like to add to that, in case anyone's hearing this for a first time, something that's really important is that a lot of communities outside don't have a civilian mechanic in the fire department.
Correct.
Right? And so what the chief is alluding to is very shortly after he started, he came to me when the budget was already set and said, you know, we have an existing repair maintenance budget. I think instead of spending it, outsourcing it and waiting forever, we can hire someone in-house and have it be budget neutral and it's all going to work fine. Which is a lot for somebody to come say. And I said, okay, right, I have a proposal for me and we'll think about it. And came in and the numbers looked like they could work. The chief has made it really work. Our mechanic, Tim, has been excellent. But something that's really important here was that this was a budget-neutral move that dramatically improved the level of fleet maintenance in-house for our emergency response vehicles and is starting to be able to generate, it's not going to pay for a building project and we still have a structural revenue problem. But this was an innovative way to improve how we're taking care of our capital assets, making sure that our folks are safe, and minimizing the downtime on these vehicles. So Jamie, to your question, a lot of places, it's hard to get skilled mechanics. It's also why it's important that we have good wage packages for our labor unions, right? And we worked with SPIA DPW, actually. It's a fire mechanic, but it's housed under the umbrella of the DPW union. So it's, you know, an interesting fire department proposal that leads you to the public works department, sitting with their union, talking about a fire job. But they worked with us and it's been a great program. So
That's great.
Having those relationships and making sure that you're attracting quality people is how you do it.
And the, for the vision, the goal here is that when we build this program out, you know, all the effort and the saving and everything we're doing to get ready, when we build this program out and we have everybody on board and we're really, you know, turning the wrenches, pardon the pun, but all of our Easton fire apparatus maintenance, the parts, the maintenance, the time, will now become strictly paid for by the outside work. So we can, you know, in times where we're trying to figure out the budget now, this is something that will eventually become an offset. So we can turn those funds in our budget now that we spend on maintenance to help take care of other equipment needs or staffing needs and not have to come back and ask for those increases. So it will, that's a sizable amount of money that can go to something else once we get that program built up.
Feels like this should be a model that could be replicated in other parts of the state. Like, I'm thinking of Western Mass. You know, they're having, really struggling with building municipal fire and DPW and police buildings as well. There'll be a flurry of those kind of buildings out there and they should be really thinking about that when, when the time comes for them.
The trick is finding the right person. Connor alluded to that. You have to have the right mechanic to do this project. If you don't, it will not succeed. We're very lucky we have Tim. He's very, very knowledgeable. He's incredibly talented. I'm a mechanic. He's a technician. And without that, you can build a facility all you want. And finding them and then recognizing the investment that you need. So we've sent Tim to various trainings around the country because these trucks are the most sophisticated vehicles in Easton, period. They're nothing more complicated. And you need to get trained and you need to go to the factory. And that's an investment we need to make as a community to send them. And we are. And that's why it's successful. But a lot of communities don't have the resources to do that. They might be able to pass the capital to build the facility, they don't have the resources to invest in the people, to send them for the training and to keep that up. He goes to Florida every summer. I was in Florida. I know it's rough, but he goes to Florida for, that's where the Emergency Vehicle Technician Program is. And he sits on the board of the testing program to help improve that process and be a part of it. And the benefit is all the free tests we get for free because we send them. So there's some financial offset and we're still investing. It's a great plan. And so we're able to do that. And that's why it's successful.
When are you going to set up the mechanic training program for the state?
We'll put that on the list. That'll be, that'll be the problem. You know, I'm already eyeballing consolidation with a couple of other departments that their mechanic program might be falling off. Working on it.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. You know, another example of innovation and vision and it's working out great.
Thank you.
So I move to approve the intermunicipal agreements between the Town of Easton and the Towns of Hanson and Duxbury for the Fire Department Apparatus Maintenance.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
A C S?
Lamb, yes.
Bolgenetti, yes?
Bajie, yes.
So before you leave, I just want to say one thing while you're here. We've had a number of community emergencies over the last several months. And I just want to remark about how well you and Chief Boone work together. And when he's out, you know, trying to corral this emergency, you just somehow step in and start managing things to help, you know, help keep things moving. You did that at the fire in Brockton. You were the first one to step up over there. And I just want, I want people to know that. It's very unusual in communities for police, fire and DPW to work so well together. But it's like you guys are brothers, literally. Like, you just know how to finish each other's sentences and, and work so well together. And it's really incredible. And I just want to let you know how much I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very fortunate to have a great counterpart in both, you know, Chief Boone and Director Field because it's rare, like you point out. And they're, whether it's work texts or we're helping each other out, or just some, our families are getting to know each other, which is great. And that's what we want because we want to keep that going longer in the future. Where I joke with Chief Boone all the time that he can't retire before me and I can't retire before him. So we keep looking at that. So we make sure we're together. So, but thank you. Appreciate that.
Which is hopefully never.
I was going to say.
I can't promise you never. Can't promise you never.
We're talking about fiscal 47?
Yeah.
Another decade to 12 years, this sounds about right. So I'll give you another decade.
Excellent.
If you'll have me.
Thank you for being here. It's a long night tonight and we appreciate you being here.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Chiefs.
Thank you.
And Wendy, thank you.
Appreciate the support.
All right.
See you tomorrow.
Yes, you will.
Yes.
So the next item, the discussion and vote for the Fiscal 23 and Fiscal 24 Financial Audit Contract with Markham LLP.
So, Markham, Markham has given us a two-year proposal to do the audit for Fiscal 23 and 24. By executing this contract, we will be scheduled for field work on the last week of April. And at that point, we will be like ready to hit the ground running to get this done as quickly as possible. And by having the two years, we'll then be able to start the next audit for the fiscal year ended 2024 much sooner.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to mention that, you know, for each year, the price has gone up. It's a $2,000 increase each year, which is, which is pretty nominal, given the way prices have been going up, you know, the last year or two.
All right. Any questions, comments?
So this fiscal year 23 is last, is last year?
Yes, ended June 30th. Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. So I move to award the FY 23 and FY 24 Financial Audit Contract to Markham LLP in the amount of $115,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
A C S?
Lamb, yes.
Bolgenetti, yes?
Bajie, yes.
All right. Thank you for being here, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the nomination of Inspector of Animals, Jordan Holbrook. We have a memo submitted by Kristin Kennedy, the Director of Health and Community Services, requesting the nomination of Jordan Holbrook to serve as the Animal Inspector for the Department of Agricultural Resources, Division of Animal Health. Currently, Ms. Holbrook serves the town in this capacity as part of her job as the town's Animal Control Officer. The term expiration for this appointment is April 30th, 2025. And there is a recommendation that we do this via roll call vote. Just as a side note, Jordan Holbrook has been doing an amazing job for our community. She's like a pet whisperer superstar. Anybody that has a pet issue on social media, they're going right to her. And she's been doing a great job for us. So.
Saving an owl's life that flew into the Eastern Youth Baseball League netting. That was a beautiful specimen, too. And the fact that they managed to save that animal's life is amazing.
Wow.
So I move to nominate Jordan Holbrook to the position of Inspector of Animals with an expiration date of April 30th, 2025.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb. Roll call?
Stebbins, Holbrook.
A C S?
Lamb, Holbrook.
Bolgenetti, Holbrook?
Bajie, Holbrook.
Excellent. All right. Discussion and vote, adoption of the Easton Committee for Climate Action Planning Charge. At our March 11th meeting, the board reviewed the draft charge for the Committee for Climate Action Planning, otherwise known as C cap, which would be tasked with guiding the process for developing Easton's climate action plan. The draft charge has been available for review and comment over the past two weeks. And the final draft charge for the establishment of the C cap is attached in our packet for our review. Did anybody have any comments or questions on that?
No.
I think it was well-written and it covered everything we wanted.
Yep. And it's necessary.
Very important.
All right. So would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the charge?
I vote, I move to adopt the Easton Committee for Climate Action Planning Charge.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
A C S?
Lamb, yes.
Bolgenetti, yes?
Bajie, yes.
Excellent. Coming down to the wire here. Town Administrators Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Change Order Memo Number One. Connor?
Thank you, Dottie. We're just going to have a presentation queued up here. I will try to be as efficient as I can with this without skipping over important information. So as the board is well-familiar, every year, we issue a preliminary operating budget for the coming July 1st in preliminary form, typically by the end of February. And then we issue iterations of this throughout the winter and into the spring, usually trying to have the budget in balance by the late April hearings of the Finance Committee and the School Committee to have a balanced budget to bring to town meetings. So tonight is the first in, what is usually two to three change memos along that pathway as we get towards a balanced budget. And we have our work cut out for us this year, as I laid out in February. We've made some important progress, but we're, we're still not halfway there. So we'll talk about what we've done to make that progress tonight, what I think remains to be done, some of the challenges that we have and how, how we can try to get closer to home. So the preliminary deficit, which started at just shy of 3.3 million, has been reduced to 2,522,952. Adjustments on both sides of the ledger provide a revised Fiscal 25 General Fund expense level of 100,383,000 with a revenue projection shy of that currently of 70, sorry, 97,860,000. This is important progress, but as I've mentioned, we have a long way to go still to bring this budget into balance. And as I'll detail in the coming slides, based on the steps we've taken so far, the remaining options to do so are going to involve reserve use and further reductions to town and school operating budget requests. So getting here, the largest portion of the deficit reduction to date has been from recommended reductions that I've implemented to town department operating requests for Fiscal 25, inclusive of other fixed cost adjustments, net an increase in forecasted exempt debt service for the new building project, which is offset, right? So you see that's a 438,000 number that is revenue that's increased on one side and it is commensurately met with that exempt expenditure. So it's, it's neutral, on the deficit, it's neutral in the operating budget because that's an exempt project. But collectively, our general fund expenses have been reduced from 100,531,000 down to the earlier number of 100,383,000. We've cut 766,000 out of that preliminary deficit. As I've said, we're at about a $2.5 million gap that remains. And so I'll talk through where we are on the revenue side before getting into the expense reductions. So again, just quickly before getting into state aid on the revenue side, and this is in the budget memo that's been shared with the board, it will also be shared online at easton MA.us/budgets. That debt exclusion taxation, that's something that's worth focusing on because as we navigate our way through a tough budget year invariably, there will be a question of how, how can, let's say, the fire department's budget not be getting its needs met? Didn't we just vote on supporting police, fire, public works in the fall? Didn't we just vote on new school four years ago? Those are capital projects that are critically important. Those are huge step forwards for the community. But they're fundamentally, outside of some efficiencies that you achieve, as far as utility spending, emergency repair spending, they're, they're neutral on the operating position. So it doesn't translate into necessarily increased operating capacity for your staff, as far as your number of staff. And it doesn't translate into increased operating pressure that leads to a revenue deficit. So I think it's important that we always level set that when we talk about where the budget is. So taxes outside of the exempt debt remain unchanged. Local receipts have been bumped up from one to a 2% increase over Fiscal 24 levels based on our actual year-to-date collections. We're going to continue to look at that. We think there's a little bit more area for improvement here. One of the areas I want to touch on tonight that has not changed since the last memo is state aid. We have not yet seen an iteration of the state budget. Houseways and Means will be the next version of a budget to come out. Sometimes we have that, but some of the year we don't right now. We are hoping, we have advocated for increased Chapter 70. That's the State Education Funding Program for cities and towns around Massachusetts. I wish it didn't take the level of stress that we're seeing so many cities, towns and school districts under this budget cycle because this is not a phenomenon unique to Easton. For this to start getting more kind of press coverage, but it is kind of breaking through that bubble and being carried a lot of the press because there are a lot of school districts and communities that are grappling with a really, really hard budget cycle this year, in part because the state funding formula is identifying nearly two-thirds of all school districts in Massachusetts as what are called minimum aid, which is where they'll get a fractional increase in their education funding from the state, in some cases as low as $30 per student. And so state aid remains unchanged from the preliminary memo. And the proposed increase in state education funding to Easton next year, along with 148 other school districts, is less than 1%. The underfunding of state aid, both Chapter 70, particularly Chapter 70 because it is our largest state aid account at over 10 million, and unrestricted general government aid is the single largest contributor to the town's longstanding structural revenue deficit. And the current state budget proposal, as I've noted, would increase education funding by less than 1% to Easton and less than 1% to 148 other districts around the Commonwealth. Before leaving Chapter 70, I think it's important to note, the Student Opportunity Act was great progress on a statewide level. The Chapter 70 program is being funded at the highest level it's ever been funded at. So if you're somebody following along your local budget process and hearing this information, it can seem at odds with news coverage saying historic levels of state education funding. But both of those things can be true. Because as you see in that graph, there is a tiny, tiny, tiny sliver of districts that are getting 10, 15, over 15% increases year over year, while the vast majority of them are not. So Wendy was kind enough to pull publicly available Chapter 70 budget data from the state. So going into Fiscal 25, the current proposal from the state is to increase statewide Chapter 70 spending by 263 million across the state. 210 districts, or 210 to 212, will receive 14 million of that number, with the balance of 249 million going to the remaining 103 districts. And so that's how you can simultaneously have a historic bottom line, Chapter 70 spending, while you have minimum aid districts like Easton receiving less than 1% increases. In the scheme of the Commonwealth's proposed budget for next year, which is $58 billion, increasing minimum aid from $30 per student, which is what Easton has and will continue to receive, with the exception of two years where our legislators were able to help us out and double that to 60. The Mass Municipal Association has long been lobbying for a minimum aid, as has Easton, of $100 per student. That would more than triple the annual growth to Easton from about 100,000 to 333,000 a year, which again, doesn't solve a deficit instantaneously in one year, but compounding over many years, we're in a totally different ballgame. That would cost $48 million to the state, which is less than 1/10 of 1% of their budget. Inadequate minimum aid funding, again, is the single largest contributor to a structural revenue deficit that Easton has had since 2008. This graph also really starts in 2008. The second largest state aid account that we have in Easton is unrestricted general government aid. Used to be known as lottery revenue because it is primarily sourced from the lottery, which in Massachusetts is one of the most successful lotteries in all of the United States, was structurally established for the purpose of benefiting cities and towns. And during the financial collapse, 2008, it was cut quite dramatically from a bottom line funding level of 1.3 billion to 900 million. It was renamed unrestricted general government aid. And we are still, on a statewide level, in and in Easton, looking at a proposal that is lower in real dollars going into '25 than it was in 2008, not adjusting for inflation. So we're getting, the proposal from the state right now is a sub 1% increase on Chapter 70 and a 3% increase in unrestricted general government aid. The folks at the Mass Budget and Policy Center have a great tool, Budget Browser, where they take and categorize and visualize state budgets. And if you adjust unrestricted local aid for inflation over time, you, you can see that that account has lost 40% of its value compared to 2001. So 2001, inflation-adjusted local aid in Massachusetts was funded at over 2 billion. And we're looking at still below 1.3 billion, which even without accounting for inflation is lower than the real funding of that account before the 2008 recession. So I don't belabor that point because saying structural revenue deficit is my favorite financial term, but because that context is really important. We've been able to make some modest progress rebuilding from a depressed baseline of operations after some pretty serious cuts to operations in Fiscal '21 when COVID first hit. And And as we are coming into our fourth budget cycle after the pandemic, as federal funds sunset and as the cumulative impact of inflations are really stressing fixed costs like healthcare, transportation, special education services that we have to fund, it's really important that we not forget that this stuff isn't just wallpaper that we save for fun. This is a dynamic that has really challenged our position for years and years and years and that we have been able to succeed and make some improvements in programming educationally and in public services, thanks to some smart financial decisions, thanks to the support of voters on some important building projects, thanks to really capable staff and department heads, and some of which you heard from tonight. But that, just because we don't make this the focus of every single budget, doesn't mean that it has gone away. And so rather than spend the rest of this budget memo on this one topic, what we did last week was we pulled together a draft paper that took bits and pieces of budget and analytical reports that we've put together over the past decade that cover this topic in a really, really comprehensive manner, not only what the structural revenue deficit is, why do we have one, what are the challenges that it poses, but what have we done to mitigate it and succeed in spite of it, right? Because I think that's really important for public to know as well. We haven't kind of looked at this and said, oh, well, it's hard, so I guess, you know, just close up shop. You know, we've been very innovative in the areas of energy, healthcare, power purchase agreements, departmental reorganizations, regional service agreements, things like revenue generation opportunities, in housing, special education services, to try to just escape the gravity of this persistent problem. And so if people go to that website, which is easton MA.us/budgets, there's a functionally a white paper there if that's your thing for helping you get to sleep at night that puts all of that information in one place so you don't have to kind of scour through 15 years of budget documents if you're curious about it. So state aid remains unchanged. We will closely follow that. We are and will continue lobbying for more adequate increases, and that is also true of the superintendent, the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association doing the same thing. Expense reductions to date. So both the schools and the towns leadership instructed their departments to put forward what a level service budget number would be for the fall for fiscal '25. Level service isn't the same thing as level funding because the cost of the same supplies, materials often go up year over year in what seems like very different times. Oftentimes, a challenging aspect of that would maybe be labor agreements, cost of living adjustments. Town unions and I believe most school unions heading into next year have a 2% cost of living adjustment, so that is not the primary driver of these challenges. Again, we have fixed costs, both carried in those fixed cost budgets, but also manifesting in some of the supply costs that we're seeing for transportation, I'll get to on the school side. And so the level service number for the town department was over 6%, which we knew right out of the gate is not a figure we can afford within our recurring revenue. So that has been reduced. We instructed all departments to cut the equivalent of a 10% reduction to their expense budgets, kind of meat cleaver type approach. These are budgets that were already cut to minimize layoffs, although not totally avoid layoffs and reductions enforced during COVID. So these are already very lean expense budgets, but we basically give them a choice of either expense or the equivalent out of operations. So that's 317,000 of cuts. That brings the town department requests across all towns that increase over current year just shy of 5%, total of 20,815,000. Some of those, what those will translate into will be different for every department, but some examples include reduced training, reduced repair and maintenance budgets, deliberately putting lag time or gaps in replacement of retiring personnel so that we can save a small net in the 12-month scheme of budget, increased reliance on competitive grants or gift funds to fund necessary technical services. So you'll see us coming with requests more regularly for things like a Stonehill gift to fund technical analysis that we really ought to be doing to do things like keep our kind of seed money approach to much larger capital programs moving, and increased reliance on ARPA grant for some of the layoff restoration provisions that were funded back in 2021. We knew the program was expiring and the initial proposal of the budget, that out of the grant into the operating budget, but with the scale of the deficit, we just cannot do it this year. So that buys us some time, that buys us 12 months. They're important adjustments to move us towards balance, but they will necessarily weaken our operating capacity and they're not permanently sustainable, and we're going to need to cut more to get to balance. On the school side, we worked with the schools, we put a placeholder estimated at 6%, knowing that the actual numbers when they were crunched could be higher than that. And they were, the number still in our budget remains at 6%. The schools are going through similar budget maneuvers on their side. They've implemented a 10% expense reduction across all departments, and they're really grappling with extraordinary fixed cost increases for transportation, special education services of over 10% in accounts that are sometimes more than $1 million. So you know, you have a handful of these necessary services that a school district must provide if they're increasing by 10%, 10%, 10%, and adds up to 600, 700, 800,000 really strains their operating budget. They're also expecting potentially losing certain federal grants based on some of these grant programs do not have sliding scales for where you qualify. So if you have a certain percentage of the population that falls under the federal poverty statistic, by 1/10th of a percent, you receive the full grant, and if you go over it by 1/10th of a percent, you lose the whole grant. And that could be a six-figure funding swing year to year. The figure accounts for anticipated retirements that'll be coming in fiscal '25. It assumes the use of certain revolving funds necessary for operations, ARPA funds for interventionists that were originally brought on during COVID, reducing staff through attrition, and as I said, already has an expense cut baked into the departments. And so fixed costs, another area, so we have reduced fixed costs in two important areas. One is health insurance. Unfortunately, there is no good news in the health insurance area, so the actuals were voted on by the Group Insurance Commission. They were pretty close to the aggregate increase of 9.6%. That is, from a year-over-year budgeting perspective, I think the worst year we've had, we've actually, one of the things we did to fight against the structural revenue deficit over years was move into the GIC. We've actualized, you know, closer to 3% a year healthcare premium growth, which is really quite good, is far better than overall market performance. We're not having a good year, and no one else in the GIC is either. And so this is a $10 million account for active and retiree healthcare. As a frame of reference, again, every single town department, including police, fire, public works, a town hall is 20 million for all those operations. So fixed cost of healthcare is half of that cost. If that's going up 9% or even 7.8%, you're talking $1,780,000. So we are reducing that from 9.6% to 7.8% based on our actual performances of our incentive programs where we've been able to incentivize staff to consider moving to more cost-effective plans and doing a savings share where they effectively receive a small bonus to move from a more costly plan into a more cost-effective one that we pay out of our savings. The savings in some of these prepared-for-family plans can be so substantial for us that we, the town, still nets a substantial overall net reduction, sometimes in excess of 100,000 per year. And so we will be rolling incentive plans out again this year, and we are reducing the health insurance budget by what we are hoping to achieve there. That is riskier than what we typically would do. We typically do those as good practice, and that can help improve our margins for free cash generation and reserve building at year end. You don't usually want to forecast something you're not sure of yet, but again, just given the scale of the deficit, that's, I think, on balance the right estimate to make today. We're eliminating the snow and ice deficit. Right now, we don't have one. It's still early enough that we could have one. We wouldn't, again, typically do it this soon in the budget season, but we don't have many options. So we have eliminated that forecasted deficit. If we do end up going over, then we would plan to visit the Finance Committee for an emergency, Finance Committee fund transfer for snow and ice costs rather than funding it through the next year's appropriation.
What about retiree health insurance? Is that changeable?
So retiree healthcare premiums are changeable by a vote of the Select Board. That's obviously a very challenging decision to make because that's, those are folks who paid their dues for many, many, many years as public servants. But yes, I mean, that is the case with active employees, it's subject to collective bargaining. But yes.
I just think when we're talking about this, everything should be on the table. I'm not saying that that would be an enjoyable thing to want to do, but I think that people should know when we're going through these processes, if we don't change it, they should know we didn't change it because that is, that is something that we could do. So I think it's just worth mentioning that.
That's correct. So one change we have not yet made at this point in the budget process is adjusting our approach to reserves, which we will need to change to get to a balanced budget. Thankfully, you know, a few times tonight, a few different items, we talked about the hard choices made years and years and years in the past to prepare for, in some cases, you know, a future vet is an improvement and that's great, and in another case, to prepare for a rainy day or a difficult day. The town, in the wake of a failed override attempt nearly 10 years ago, adopted a slate of relatively conservative financial management principles that really prioritize building our cash reserve balances, which we have done through all of it, including COVID. We've stuck to those financial principles. We've had some pretty tight budget years in the past, even pre-COVID, where the growth of our recurring revenue was not sufficient to meet even level services. Voters had come to town meetings before feeling very strongly about wanting to see additional programming, considering taking money out of reserves and to their credit. We had good discussions about those, including in this room, and voters moved forward without taking those rainy day funds, knowing that we would have difficult years in the future. And so we've built the stabilization fund for the town from about one and a half, 1.7 million in 2017. I think Mark was still in the Finance Committee at that time, and you remember us drafting those policies, and it's now just shy of 7 million. So the fund is in a healthy place. Drawing on this is going to be necessary to balance the budget. We can't close the remaining gap entirely with stabilization funds. I would absolutely not recommend that. That is, would be far too aggressive. We also have an adjusted free cash. Again, we want to minimize the use of free cash in the budget. That's another area where we've made great strides through the adoption of policy. You know, the town was in the mid-2010s, spending more, you know, more than 2% of its annual operating budget was coming from reserves, and we cut that in half down to, we were nearing 1% and trending towards sub 1% when COVID hit. And so in an ideal situation, you don't do this, to be clear.
And we're, like, $7 million sounds like a lot of money, but we're really not, we're close to where we want to be, but we're, we're still short of where we should be.
We are for a bond upgrade.
For the percentage, what do we want to be, 10% of our operating budget?
So that's 10% of free cash and stabilization, which we are, again, thankfully, for the first time ever, only in recent years, have met that target. So we have, we've set the target of having the equivalent of 10% of last year's general fund expenses in reserves. When we set that target, we were in the mid-fours, mid-fives, and it was only through building the stabilization consistently every single year, as you could see in that top graph. And being fully honest, part of the improved free cash balances is just the strangeness of doing this work through COVID where certain revenues took a huge loss and others, like building permits, exploded because everyone was spending at home, right? So we have surpassed that 10% threshold and stayed there for a few years, but that will likely change as we move into the next couple of years. So we'll need to draw on a portion of the stabilization fund balance to close some of that gap. Free cash has been, those are free cash balances, that's unspent, either unspent expenditures at the end of the year or collections of revenue in excess of what you forecasted. So our free cash certifications are still above pre-COVID levels, but it's narrowing every year, as you could see, right? We can't assume three to $4 million annual free cash certifications forever, and that's going to continue to get narrower, especially as we start to really do things like with health insurance of forecasting in a certain amount of savings from as-of-yet-realized incentive plans, you're going to really start narrowing margins on free cash. We have been phasing out ARPA revenue replacement. This is the last fiscal year '25 that we're proposing its use at 430,000 that will drop to zero in fiscal '26. So that's baked right in, right out of the gate. We know that, that's coming. If we didn't have fixed costs going up over 10%, that would be far more manageable with far fewer reserve dollars, and we had actually talked about this with Budget Subcommittee and knew this was coming. But the timing of this happening with these fixed cost increases is very challenging. So what we need to do, and I'll have a specific dollar amount programmed in for our next budget iteration, is move forward a recommended balance to town meeting of stabilization fund use so that the balance after fiscal '25 is still healthy enough to mitigate narrowing free cash and the expiration of ARPA, and to not use it at such a high level that it warrants concern about our creditworthiness. So thankfully, we have made a tremendous amount of progress in this area in the past seven years because we will need the strength that we've built. So to get from here to a balanced budget, there's still a ways to go. We have the hearing scheduled on April 24th and 25th with Finance Committee, Select Board, and School Committee. We will be looking at revenue again, Finance Department's completing an additional review of local receipts, and also a new growth analysis, anticipating the expiration of the TIF agreement associated with shovel works to identify any opportunity that we can responsibly leverage for enhancing those forecasts. Any improvements to state aid from the House budget, which we expect by the next budget iteration, will be incorporated. We are lobbying for that and hopeful that we could see an improvement, but given where the state is at with mid-year budget cuts, we are not, we're not going to bake that assumption in. I already mentioned, free cash used in the current budget is below the policy thresholds of the board. There is also a portion of available opioid settlement funds that have been distributed through national agreements that can be used as a revenue source for existing town and school programming that's relevant to combating drug use and its negative community impacts. That's something that we're going to be assessing against the Attorney General's guidelines for programmatic appropriateness with existing programs. Stabilization funds, as I noted, have been built up over many years, are going to be an important part of closing the gap. But reality is, even with more optimistic revenue revisions and reserve fund use, the current town and school budget numbers of about 4.94% for the town and 6% for the schools will need to come down further if we're going to balance the budget. So we've had hard budget years before. This is, this is up there. You know, we're operating in context of, we're going into nearly a full second decade now, minimum aid increases from the state, grappling with extraordinary fixed cost growth, coinciding with federal pandemic revenues expiring, but just leave us with nothing but kind of difficult choices here. And so I want to close with some level of optimism that thankfully, the towns, the schools, and the voters have consistently exercised a lot of discipline on the operating position necessary to bolster our reserves, to mitigate what will be a hard year, but we also need to be sober that that's going to be a 12-month solution. So we need to be very, very thoughtful with how we proceed there. And we're going to keep at it, working this until it's done, until the budget is balanced. Finance Director and I are meeting with Superintendent, School Finance Director regularly. They're meeting with their staff. We're going to work through this, and we appreciate the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee support and patience of staff in the community as we work through it. So for public's benefit, all the stuff that we do on this is public. These presentations are public. We put all of our reports online. You know, sometimes when you operate in a minimum aid community, folks know one thing for sure, and that's that their tax bills generally go in one direction every year and it's up, and then they hear that we have revenue challenges, and it's not unfair to say, what are these people doing? What's going on here? And so, you know, all of our budgets, accounting for every salary, every position, are all public. They're always, not always a heaven for quite some time. The comparative analyses are up there. The comparative analyses are up there. That's another really important aspect here. If someone says, "Well, why are you cutting repair and maintenance, cut staff?", we have some of the leanest staff spending levels among not only comparable communities, using publicly available Department of Revenue data, but when you look at, like, general government, when, you know, folks might look at, like, town halls and say, "Oh, well, you know, they're always protecting payroll, and Easton's town hall operations spend the fewest dollars per capita of any town in Massachusetts." So, and I'm not saying that as necessarily a point of pride. We are extraordinarily lean on staff, and so there's not some sort of easy solve there, because we have been reducing through attrition, we have been reorganizing and things like that over many, many, many years in the face of some pretty extraordinary external economic pressures from 2008 through COVID to make it to where we are. So if folks want to follow along with that, go to eastondata.us/budget. That website's here on the screen, and we'll continue to publish all this stuff as we go along.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Wendy. Everybody that works on the budgets, Sean, I think everybody has a hand in this in one way or another from your office. It's really hard stuff, and trying to be creative, you can only get so far with that. So I appreciate all the work and thought that goes into this.
I just, I appreciate the work, too, that you guys put in, you know, now having a link to go to that work that you've, to explain, and for us, that's fantastic, as we've talked about that, needing to be able to explain concisely to the community, you know, what it means to live within a structural deficit like we do, and how, you know, the constraints it puts on us.
Yep. Any other comments, questions?
I just find it incredibly frustrating when you consider how many cities and towns are minimum aid, and yet the legislature can't seem to figure out how to get around and how to deal with that. There are people from those cities and towns that are minimum aid, and they don't seem to understand, or at least they don't seem to want to figure out a way in which to address that.
Well, I think that they think that they're putting the money where the need is, and that communities like ours don't need the money. I don't think that's what they actually told us when we went in and met with them. And in a certain respect, I can see, when you're looking at, you know, some of the cities that are, that are underfunded, they're dealing with big challenges also. It's just, there's just not enough money to go around. They should be trying to find ways to be able to satisfy all the communities with some additional funding. So, all right, right here, legislators.
All right, on that note, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes of March 11th, 2024?
So moved, Roger.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Boljanetti, yes.
Bodger, yes.
Excellent. Town Administrator notes?
I have none.
Sean, anything from you?
No.
Select Board notes?
No.
I just know that the feedback I'm getting from the folks who are doing the work with you, it's, they're all so excited about.
Citizens Academy.
Citizens Academy. The feedback I just got about the meeting with the police was pretty impressive, so.
Yeah.
DPW, we were actually, you know, went and interrupted the meeting, but they were talking some, they were learning so much about what the DPW does. And two of my neighbors, obviously, they come over and tell me all about what they were experiencing, so.
It's helpful when they're actually, when they're engaged and they want to be, want to be there and ask really great questions and interact with our staff, so glad to hear that there's good feedback on that.
And I just wanted to mention, Easton lost one of their, somebody who's just been such a tremendous part of the community, Gloria Frey, has passed away this week, and I just want to, if anybody has the opportunity to read her obituary, it's just incredible what she was involved in over her years. A real person that was way ahead of her time, so I just want to acknowledge and remember her and send sympathies to their family. And I also want to mention, when I was talking about the first responders working together, I was kind of thinking of what happened in my neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, when there was a silver alert for an elderly man from the, one of the rest homes. I didn't know what was going on at the time, and I mean, I'm talking, there were so many police, detectives, helicopters, you name it, and just grateful that they found him before the night ended. It was, I was going to bed around 11 o'clock thinking, "Oh, this poor guy, where is he?", and they found him, I think, before midnight. So it was a long day for them. They used a lot of resources, and just to see how they were working together and, you know, synchronized and getting all of their people out there looking for him was really impressive. So I just want to thank everybody that led to a successful outcome on that.
So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Roger.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Bodger, yes.
Thank you to ECA for broadcasting tonight. Have a good night.